Hearing all that, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. We will move on to our information portion of the meeting tonight. Uh, first we will receive a report and I'm delighted to have um, a report from superintendent of um, Doc- Dr. Michael Favor of Intermediate School District nine seventeen. Welcome, Dr. Favor.
Thank you, thank you. Board Chair Chester, board members, Superintendent Battle. Thank you for having me here today. I know you have a full agenda. I will be respectfully quick. But also, I want to provide you with information on nine seventeen. I have been the superintendent since July one. Excited to be there and excited to work with all of our children. Because in our member districts, they're all our children. Alright. Want to start with the way we start at nine seventeen. Want to start with this lighthouse. Um, I have an affinity for lighthouses. Uh, if you ever go up the North Shore, it's one of, one of the more beautiful ones I've seen. And they remind me of the elegance, the beauty, the security that they provide. And in a storm, which we've been in, the storm of the pandemic, we have been, in my opinion, that light through the storm. At nine seventeen, I tell all of our staff, I share with them often, that we belong to each other. And part of that belonging to each other, and I want to thank everyone for being that lighthouse for our children during the pandemic. I also want to thank members of nine, of uh, one ninety-one for the work that they do. Paraprofessionals, bus drivers, cooks, teachers, anyone that has any kind of contact with young people and families. Because in the storm, the storm of the pandemic, we have been, you have been, that lighthouse for members of the community. Board members, thank you for your work and thank you for being that strength, showing that strength. Alrighty, as we jump into this, um, just a reminder that Intermediate School District, the legislators, that was passed in nineteen sixty-nine, chapter thirteen, one thirty-six D, talked about post-secondary education and students that we serve, birth to twenty-one. Our member districts consist of, as you can see here, Farmington, West St. Paul, Bloomington, Ever Grove, South St. Paul, Birdsville, Lakeville, Randolph, and Hastings. We are spread out. We're spread out really wide and you're gonna see the number of locations that we have here. If you look at this map of the metro, we have satellite programs in many schools, as well as um, we have our own facilities within um, different communities to best serve students. We have a unique joint powers agreement with Dakota County Technical College. That's where um, our main offices are. We offer our alternative school there. We also offer some CTE, career and technical education onsite, and some other services, serving our, our unique, our students with unique needs. So right there onsite at Dakota County Technical College. That joint powers agreement, which has been in place for twenty years, is currently being renewed right now. I mentioned the vision, as you can see here, we have an emphasis on, and our mission, providing high-quality, equitable, and specialized programming that meet the needs of all students. And when we say all, we are committed to all. All students in the, in developing programming that meets that need. So there's often a time for innovation. We must be innovative in the work that we do because each student, as you know, has specific and unique needs. And our mission, and our vision, and our core values. This was just approved at our last board meeting. And uh, we're finalizing a strategic plan that began to happen before I got, before I walked into nine seventeen, before I got there. And um, I'm happy to finalize it and move it into action even more so. It's been a long process. What we did at nine seventeen, as part of the strategic plan, I wanted to share this with everyone. When we talked about equity, we didn't just talk about racial equity. We talked about equity in a number of different categories. Uh, this is bold. This is a lot of work, but we believe that we're up to it. We believe this came from our staff, this is the work that they wanted to do. And below is a word cloud, and you'll see the word language. You're gonna notice within our presentation that not only do we offer special ed services, but our alternative school services with decals. I am still learning all the acronyms. And um, when we talk about language, there's often a lot of barriers in our work because of language. So we're trying to make it, make sure that we're organizing around language and eliminating some of those barriers. Just highlighting the different programs, career and technical education. If you hear that word, CTE, under CTE and career technical education, here are some of the programs that we offer. We are currently doing a reboot of many of those programs. It is important that we build on the work that's happening in your district and not try to duplicate it, but also how we can add the college early credits because we're right there on campus and help our students, if this is a direction that they want to go, earn college credit while in high school. Our decals, Dakota County Alternative Learning School, that's our special ed. They're separate from each other, people like to put them together. Although we do have some students who have special needs that are in our CTE programming, we don't limit it. But they're really separate programming. So if we have students that uh, learn differently and have chosen to, which is interesting, when they get to our campus on college, they probably behave much differently than they do in some of your high schools. Because um, on our campus, it's a college atmosphere, it's some responsibility, but they don't have, you know, we try not to give them too much freedom, but we want to make sure that they stay focused. But when you hit that college atmosphere, they behave much differently. Then the unique special ed programming that we have, um, is described here as well. Partners, some of our strategic partners, um, everyone from the Minnesota Humanity Center. We're going deeper in our work at the Minnesota Humanity Center and partnering with the Minnesota Humanity Center so that we can provide equity and equitable services for our member districts. We want to be known as a partner with the Minnesota Humanity Center. So as needs arise in our member districts, our member districts can come to us to help us support those needs with programming and co-create where, as an educator, I was a constructivist teacher, how we co-create the learning together. At one ninety-one, this is in twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen. These are the numbers that were in place. You had about, we had about a thousand students in special ed, little over a thousand. And the number of students that were there from twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen. Your current numbers, uh, we have about forty students that are in our center base in special ed programming. Ninety-one students receiving itinerant services. Now itinerant services often happen in your building, and some of those services are deaf and hard of hearing, visually impaired. So when we say itinerant, that's what we mean. We program to meet the needs in your buildings. And then um, you have a waiting list. We have a waiting list right now. You have roughly about thirteen students on that waiting list, and those are the programs. Just want to be clear about options for waiting list. If you and if we can serve students while on the waiting list, we have some districts that were doing that. Please reach out to our special ed program, Dr. Shaler. She will provide um, information on how best we can serve students and families who are on that waiting list because we know we have a waiting list. Our waiting list is due to staffing. When I hit the door, when I walked in it, uh, to nine seventeen, we were down a hundred and twenty-nine paraprofessionals. We have slowly knocked that number down to about a hundred, just over a hundred. But as you know, the importance of hiring quality people. Because if you don't hire well, in the end, it, it takes away from what we do with students. It's not good for students and it's not good for the organization. So we are slowly closing that gap. Once we get fully staffed, um, I was checking the calculations today. We will have a waiting list of one, one person, once we get fully staffed, and that's the goal. But the goal is also to hire quality people. One of our problems with hiring is we're not on a bus route. A lot of our programming are not on a bus route, so it's hard for people to get to our programs. For example, in Rosemont, um, nine seventeen, there is no transportation out there unless you have your own transportation. So we're trying to figure out those barriers as well. Decals, just again, that's alternative school. Here's some of the history. Here's currently what we have from nine, from one ninety-one, thirty-five students. We have three campuses. One, the north campus is in West St. Paul. The main campus is Dakota County, and the south campus is uh, in Farmington. So like I said, we're pretty spread out. Just a synopsis of some of the programming and participation. Everything from the heavy-duty trucks to the construction trades. Again, we like to reboot some of the things we're doing, listening to the superintendents, getting feedback. Some of the things that we're doing with our CTE programming so that students can earn dual credit in the process. That's really where we're looking to and as well as internships. That's it. Just wanna thank you all for allowing me to be here today. I have such respect for Dr. Battle and working with her. And she's a, she's an incredible colleague and a mentor. I appreciate her and her work and I appreciate her lens of her work. It's all means all to Dr. Battle, and I kind of stole that from her, if you don't, don't tell her though. Any questions before I go?
If board members have any questions, thank you, Dr. Favor. Uh, Director Miller.
Dr. Favor, thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for your presentation. I'm in my second term, sixth year doing this, and this is the first time we've had someone in your position in front of us to give us a little better insight, and that's not to pointing fingers or fault, I really do appreciate this, so it's fantastic. You know, I'm curious, uh, you, you, you've been there a short period of time, I appreciate that, or, well, almost a year now, right? Getting closer. Tell me about your first, your, your best day on the job.
Probably my best day was um, I have lunch with this young lady and um, those are my best days. When she comes into the office and shares with me um, what she's learned today and also um, how she lights up when she sees me. That's my best day because I light up when I see her. So anytime I have an opportunity to work with young people, I appreciate adults, but you know, sometimes it's really good to be around young people. So that's really been my best day, the opportunity to work with young people.
And then what, um, what keeps you awake at night? And then, you know, phrase it, uh, let, let us know what, how we can help you with that.
Staffing. Paraprofessionals. You know, um, we're competing, when I hit the door, uh, we ended up raising our salary of our paraprofessionals. And now we're in negotiations with our paraprofessionals. And um, we raise the salary to attract more paraprofessionals in to a competitive wage. I think, I'm gonna be honest with you. We can do better and we will do better at the work that's in front of us. So when you say what keeps me up, the idea of being complacent with some of the things we're doing. We can do better and we will do better.
Excellent, thank you.
Other comments, questions? Director Al.
Not a question, but um, just a comment to echo Director Miller's comment. I do actually remember the last time we had the nine seventeen superintendent, and it has been a long time. And I really appreciate you taking time to be with us tonight, particularly, you know, in your, as you're new in the position and with the district. Hopefully we'll be able to enjoy, you know, periodic check-ins with you as well. It's always, I always appreciate hearing what's going on in, in nine seventeen and with our students there.
If you ever want a tour, don't hesitate. And I'll say it again, all our member districts, they're all our children. You know, we need to be, we should be programming for all of our children. And again, Dr. Battle brings some great ideas and things that she shared with me, that's already making us better.
I just, I have a question for you. Is there any programming or anything that you see that you are lacking right now? Besides, I mean, I know you said staffing, but are, are there any other programs that you like have a wish list of, that you wish that you have?
I want to see how we can, just, and I haven't shared this with anyone, so don't tell anyone. I want to see how we can create student unions from member districts and uh, bring more people together. And house it at Dakota County Technical College where we can hear student voice. Then I want to come back to our superintendents and share that student voice about the programming that young people want to see and want in their schools.
I love that idea. Thank you.
Don't tell anyone. Talk to the superintendents.
Got a bad news story, it's livestreamed.
Dr. Favor, we call that student agency in one ninety-one core value.
Beautiful.
I'll share more with you.
Any other comments, questions?
I appreciate it, thank you.
No, thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Be well.
Dr. Favor, I will see you at the next board meeting.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Now we'll receive a report from Dr. Teresa Battle Superintendent and Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services, about FY twenty-three budget development. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Chester, Directors of the Board. Tonight Lisa Ryder and I will share updates about the list of adjustments, provide more information about proposed items for reductions and new expenditures. This list continues to be in draft form because there are other budget units not decided yet, and we will provide more information in the workshop. These include a few, just a couple, board of education. We will likely require a little uh, increase for that budget. As you know, there's an election next year, so that'll be coming forward soon too. And also technology. The budget process is a continual revision until the board adopts on June thirtieth. Is the, if the governor and legislature come to agreement on the state's omnibus funding bill and we get additional funding, we will adjust our revenue projections and in turn revise our adjustments. For example, in addition to the hard deadline of June thirtieth for districts to submit a balanced budget, we have our own hard deadlines associated with the budget process, such as bargaining unit contractual agreements with specific layoff language and dates for staff to be notified. I encourage each of our viewers to share your thoughts about educational funding with our governor and our legislators. The one ninety-one legislative platform approved by this board is a wonderful resource for you to use. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. I also want to share that we do have some pending requests still being vetted by a cross-functional team. One, technology has requested an additional one point oh clerk. And also our elementary principals have submitted a request for additional EA support. Previously I shared my budget approach is priority-based. This is in contrast to other budget approaches such as zero-based budgeting, when you build your budget starting from zero dollars or a straight percentage reduction across all budget units. Previously I've shared my strategies for structurally balancing the budget and I want to highlight a couple. First, rightsizing. Later tonight, you'll see an updated preliminary adjustment for rightsizing. Rightsizing is when we align staff to enrollment. For employee groups, each has a different baseline and criteria for decide, for deciding the number we need based on rightsizing for enrollment. For example, our teacher staffing is tied to enrollment and class size targets that this board has established. For custodians, we use square footage of our buildings. Additional criteria are used such as for instructional staff and student supports, we use our actual student needs, such as specialized needs such as speech and also mandates such as maintenance of effort for special education. For operations, we look at compliance requirements from both policy and state statute. For example, this week, radon testing began across our sites. And also we look at additional mandates around long-term facility projects. A second strategy I like to highlight is using all of our funding sources strategically. This board has been very strategic in using its authority to levy for funds. In my first year, I remind us that the board successfully received voter support for a general levy at the cap for ten years. And previously in twenty fifteen, voters approved a technology levy. We cannot thank our voters enough for approving that, those levies. Finally, I wear many hats as a superintendent. As one of those hats is being chief financial officer in partnership with the board, we must be good stewards of the taxpayers' money and comply with requirements from both policy and statute, including submitting a balanced budget. We are committed to making the best decisions on behalf of our students, their families, staff, and the communities we serve. I appreciate later you will get some information about some staff meetings we held. And I appreciate uh, the surveys, people who completed surveys and people who attended the staff meetings to bring us their perspective. A second hat I wear is my teacher hat. Because I know this district's core business is teaching and learning. The most important relationship in our district is between the teacher and the student. And the second most important relationship is between the school and families. In recommending the budget, I know wearing this teacher hat, we cannot have too little for teachers and too much for admin. Our data bears this out as this board also holds that approach. Currently for district-level administration, we're at four point zero eight percent of our total spending. The statewide average is four point eight one on district administration. In fiscal year twenty-one, we spent thirteen percent less than the state average on district-level administration costs. On the other hand, the same year, we spent eight point seven percent more than the state average on regular instruction, forty-three percent more on CTE, and fifteen point seven percent more on special education. I share these statistics because of the inadequate lack of funding we receive from our state. It is extremely challenging for this district to continue to provide the resources our students need. Our parents are asking for more. Our students want more and they deserve more. As the direct supervisor for all employees with support from my designated staff, I want my employees to know they are valuable and the work they do to achieve our mission matters. As a human, I want them to know that when I make decisions that affect their livelihoods, I do not do so lightly. And I understand the angst caused when their positions are proposed as a possible reduction. And as a black woman, I know that reductions mean last in, first out, or like so. And that may affect our American Indian BIPOC staff disproportionately at a time when our board, community, and students want a staff that reflects the students' role. This year, sixty-seven percent of students are students of color, whereas only four percent of our teaching staff are of color. Research shows that all, as Dr. Favor says, I share with my colleagues, all students do better academically when they are supported by systems that encourage critical thinking and innovation and are taught by teachers who reflect the racial and ethnic diversity of their schools. Students who have diverse educators graduate at higher rates and are more likely to attend post-secondary. A teaching workforce that mirrors student enrollment also encourages change and equality. A diverse workforce helps develop a school culture inclusive of open communication and enhance critical consciousness of diverse perspectives. So tonight, board, in order to help us move toward the many goals we have, but first and format, foremost to achieve our mission, I present my updated proposal and I ask support for a scenario that we'll present for you tonight, which is my recommended scenario. That's asking to use three point two million of federal dollars and fund balance to prevent further reduction than are already proposed. And with that, we begin our slide presentation.
For the overview, tonight we will provide the updated information for the FY twenty-three initial budget adjustments, including the elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds, which we refer to as ESR. We will share scenarios, we will share feedback, and additional opportunities for feedback, as well as next steps to the board. Board action will take place in June of twenty twenty-two. The agenda aligns with that outcome. You can see we'll talk about our current reality strategies and some scenarios, and also then a summary report on the feedback we've received thus far and what other opportunities there may be. As we've talked about, there are strategies that we have kept in mind as we have developed the fiscal year twenty-three budget. These five points indicate those strategies that we have kept in front of us as we have worked. So the prioritizing of our, our investment in our instructional priorities, trying to always keep in mind what it is that exactly is most critical to maintain and um, infuse as, as need be for our pre-K through twelve pathways. Rightsizing, the use of restricted funds before we use our undesignated funds, finding efficiencies and utilizing our resources, and identifying strategic use of federal resources so that we may address the things that are inequitable at this time and have been disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. So our prioritizing our instructional priorities includes all of the things you see here on this list. Much of this lies within our SESA department in managing and organizing this for our students and families. Rightsizing, as we've talked about, you always start with a set formula for your student-to-teacher ratios. And so you can see for the various three levels here, our elementary, middle school, and our high school, the um, average rate, excuse me, the average ratios that we are currently using in developing the budget. These numbers have not shifted from the past. There's been no change in that process in our initial development of this budget thus far. And um, you can see that they are different for each level. I will also point out that for the, there's an asterisk for the middle and high school because in those cases, you're not just looking at the teachers that are in front of the students in the classrooms as you would in elementary, but also the other supporting staff that are available and present as licensed instructors, instructors within those buildings for middle school and high school. We do have some long-term strategies that also have come out of this conversation regarding our enrollment strategy. How can we find some energy efficiencies? Piloting right now for this spring, some pilot, um, transportation opt-ins for our activity routes. Ongoing review of contracted services, this is something we do all the- Ongoing review of contracted services, this is something we do all the time, and so it's just a matter of continuing to look at that. We do always review our debt service on a twice-a-year basis and identify those things that we might be able to reduce through refinancing. To date, since 2016, it's been over $10 million, just over, that has been reduced in future payments for interest as a result of the refunding that we have, that the board has implemented in the past few years. We are looking to establish a finance advisory committee and generate rebates through use of electronic payment, which is new since the last board meeting that has been added here. It's something that we do already, and we're looking to also identify how we might increase that. As we take a look at our current reality, this is something that we've had a little bit more complicated formula, spreadsheet that we've utilized, and we're trying to simplify this. So what you're not seeing here, you are not seeing the $23 million of federal relief funds that we've received over four years and that we're still trying to apply for, record, and follow through with those reporting requirements. Of those 17 different federal relief grants, 10 of those will probably move forward beyond this fiscal year and into FY '23 in some way, shape, or form due to them not being fully spent yet. As we talk about the use of federal funds, we're focusing on the use of the S R 3 funds, which are 80%, which are used throughout the school day, whereas there is also the 20% which is used for outside of the school day, outside of the school year. So you have very particular uses for the other types of grants that we're not also talking about and including. And in those cases, it's a matter of like Title I funds. You get an allocation, you're going to spend that equal to the amount of expenditures you have, you will have the equivalent revenue. Does that make sense? So it doesn't affect your bottom line here, which is not, our focus is on what is the net effect between our revenues and expenditures. And so in that case, then, that's why you're not seeing those reflected in these numbers. Does that make sense? So as I mentioned, we anticipate there will be about 10 moving forward and into this next year, and that will dwindle as we finalize those revenues that are available through those relief funds. So on this one, what you've got is our assumptions for revenue that have been based off from the assumed projected enrollment for next year, FY '23. And our revenues then are indicated here with $124,822,41. Expenditures then are identified here at $134,888,426. That's a variance of $10 million. And this is assuming we're not using any of the S R 3 funds to offset any of these costs or pay for current expenditures that may be required or needed to continue our programming and our staffing into the future. So at this point, this is assuming there's no federal funds available, okay? With that, you're also not seeing anything in the row for rightsizing for preliminary adjustments or again, the use of federal funds. So the anticipated unassigned fund balance under this kind of a scenario would be 7.12%. And this is, again, it's as if we do nothing. But as you've heard me say before, many times over the years, we can't do nothing, right? We have to address this issue and find a way to come through with a more balanced budget. So as we move into the next slide, it's scenario two. Dr. Battle?
You want me to cover?
I can keep going.
One, please.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, scenario one. My mistake. I'm jumping ahead a little. So the application here in scenario one is that we are then applying some rightsizing here as well as the preliminary adjustments. So as you can see, the rightsizing is listed there at the bottom of the screen on the lower right corner of $3,7,591. And we have seen the details of that, and it's on another slide that there's a link and more information available. But we've pulled up forward here and made the assumption under scenario one that there would be rightsizing. The preliminary adjustments that we have included here is $1,269,077. And in this matter, this scenario, the use of federal funds is zero. So the intention here is that we would then find ourselves having a net variance of $5,789,717 of expenditures exceeding revenues. And that full amount then would be utilizing the fund balance that is available. That would bring your fund balance then down to an anticipated unassigned fund balance of 10.42%. So the question for scenario one is, is there a determined fund balance that the board wants us to achieve? So this kind of reflects that, right? That's scenario one. Next is scenario two. Dr. Battle?
I'll present scenario two. This is the previous recommendation from me. We presented the additional scenarios after consultation with board members. So scenario two, we are applying the rightsizing, the preliminary adjustments, that 50% of federal funds for fiscal year '23 and 50% in fiscal year '24 and any fund balance strategies the board will approve. So you still see that the changes with scenario two, you'll see the variance is down to $2,589,717 by applying those strategies. That leaves an anticipated unassigned fund balance of 13.02. The board did ask me for more specificity, so the next slide, I'm going to add more information about the updated list of initial budget adjustments. This, for the public, it is a hot link so you can view the full list. We've also created a hot link to what we call the budget units, BU. And so you will see that we have some numbers. Those are the UFRS codes that I'll explain later. And if you want more detail, that's a link directly to MDE. As I shared earlier, we are finalizing a few more departments, such as the Board of Education budget, so there will be another updated list to add some more. So let's go through my strategies I'm recommending. First, rightsizing. 1.1 has stayed the same since our last update based on classized targets and averages and the enrollment we project. 22.50 full-time employees. What is new is the 1.2 and the 1.3 special education licensed staff and the special education non-licensed staff. When we last presented this information to you, I also shared that each of our budget managers went through a line item review. Our interim director of Student Support Services prepared with her staff, looking at efficiencies and looking at rightsizing. Special education and student support services are very complex funding because you have what's called maintenance of effort, which says there are a few reasons why you may not be able to spend the same amount of money you spent serving those students from the previous year. One of those reasons that you can reduce the amount you spend is a decreased enrollment. But as you know, we may receive a student coming to our district that has higher needs. And so initially, it was presented that for rightsizing, we would have 10.5 FTE that we could. I did not accept all of those. And so we put it under the efficiencies, but really, it should have been in the rightsizing. And so here you see the specially licensed staff, 2.50, and the 4.0 for non-licensed staff.
I'm going to pause.
Yes.
It's 7:10.
Yep.
So based off of what we had proposed at the beginning with the approval of the agenda, do I have a motion to move to a closed meeting pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D.05 subdivision 3C1 to develop or consider an offer for the purchase of Metcalf Middle School located at 2250 Difley Road, Burnsville, Minnesota?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt, second by Director Webb. Just a reminder to those in attendance that the meeting will reconvene.
All in favor?
You have it in yellow ahead of time. That we will upon completion of the closed meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are moving to a closed session.
Back. So, the district received an offer to purchase Metcalf Middle School and based upon that offer and discussions with the board, do I have a motion to direct staff consultants, then consultants to begin negotiation of a purchase agreement to be brought back for a formal approval at a future board meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Second by Director Connor. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now we will reconvene to where we left off in our budget presentation.
Thank you Chair Chester, Directors of the Board. And so I turn our attention once again to 1.3 Special Education Non-L licensed Staff. So this is a new addition from our last update. Our typical schedule with working with staffing in specialized services is to work with licensed staff first and then moves to educational assistance. Upon review of the needs within special education, the review of EA needed position was completed after the 224 board meeting. The next strategy. Lisa?
So sorry.
I thought it was pathways.
It is.
Good, thank you. So we're going to continue funding at current levels is our proposal. And that includes the advanced learning, elementary and advanced learning specialists, middle school embedded honors, high school college credit bearing courses, STEM elementary math curriculum adoption, coding at all elementary for, excuse me, for all elementary students, middle school science curriculum adoption, middle school project lead the way, fine arts, grade five instrumental music, fine arts curriculum development, college and career readiness, and six twelve career, college career planning system, high school pathways, industry certification courses. So this is a new addition from the last update. Next, preliminary adjustments. I highlight a few of the new additions. Lisa, help me if I miss one. 3.3 Welcome Center Student Registration in the amount of reduction of $5,000. We anticipate less subs are needed for fall enrollment only. We do think we'll need subs in future years at our Welcome Center for student registration. Also note this year, we did add two positions there to help support families that need Spanish language support as well as Somali language support. The next one is 3.5 Workers' Comp and Property Insurance in the amount of $40,000 a reduction. It's reflecting just anticipated needs as we look at our workers' comp budget. 3.9 Facilities, that's a new one? No?
I think that was there.
No, that one was there, I'm sorry.
I think we're on to the next slide.
Next page, the next slide. And it is the middle school, I think we had all of these.
3.14.
Oh, 3.14. Oh, Finance, $60,820, yes. Limit travel conferences, reduce consulting fees for service no longer needed, trim supplies budget, as well as reduce one FTE clerical position with duties absorbed within the department. Due to seniority, the impact may include other departments. Next strategy, use of federal funding for current expenditures. Here is the request I'm making to use 3.2 million of ESER funds to maintain current positions for, from this year to next year. The next slide, there are no changes. This is our use of 80%. That must be set aside for funds for supplemental needs, just a clarification. The ESER funds have two ways you can spend them, 80% and 20% for the other. Please do not be confused when we're saying we're going to use 50% of the funds this year and 50% for next year. So it's 100% of the funds with the 80 and 20, we just would like to use, it's not a straight that we're going to use 10% of the 20% this year, so I wanted to clarify that. So this is my previous recommendation with updates, and I'll turn it over to Lisa for Scenario Three.
Okay, so the 80% and the 20%, these have not changed since February 18th as Dr. Battle said, but they, they still may, is that correct?
Oh yeah, excuse me, I skipped the slide. The next slide is the 20% and the 5%, you want to share a little bit about that other little pot of money we've received?
Yeah, that's, it's almost about $90,000 that that grant is, and so we're utilizing some of it this fiscal year, and the remainder would be used next fiscal year. The purpose will be the same in both years, MTSS, PBIS, and tutoring, multi-tier student supports?
Systems.
Systems, and PBIS is, I'm sorry, I just lost it.
Positive behavior intervention.
Positive Behavior Intervention Systems, thank you very much, Mina. All right, so moving on to Scenario Three. So similar to the other two scenarios that have been presented, this one is laid out very similarly as far as the numbers and the format. What is different about this than what Dr. Battle has expressed with Scenario Two, is that this is utilizing
Come back. So, the district received an offer to purchase Metcalf Middle School. And based upon that offer and discussions with the board, do I have a motion to direct staff consultants and consultants to begin negotiation of a purchase agreement to be brought back for a formal approval at a future board meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Second by Director Connor. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now we will reconvene to where we left off in our budget presentation.
Thank you Chair Chester, Directors of the Board. And so I turn our attention once again to 1.3 Special Education Non-L licensed Staff. So this is a new addition from our last update. Our typical schedule with working with staffing in specialized services is to work with licensed staff first and then moves to educational assistance. Upon review of the needs within special education, the review of EA needed position was completed after the 224 board meeting. The next strategy. Lisa?
So sorry.
I thought it was pathways.
It is.
Good, thank you. So we're going to continue funding at current levels is our proposal. And that includes the advanced learning, elementary and advanced learning specialists, middle school embedded honors, high school college credit bearing courses, STEM elementary math curriculum adoption, coding at all elementary for, excuse me, for all elementary students, middle school science curriculum adoption, middle school project lead the way, fine arts, grade five instrumental music, fine arts curriculum development, college and career readiness, and six twelve career, college career planning system, high school pathways, industry certification courses. So this is a new addition from the last update. Next, preliminary adjustments. I highlight a few of the new additions. Lisa, help me if I miss one. 3.3 Welcome Center Student Registration in the Amount of Reduction of $5,000. We anticipate less subs are needed for fall enrollment only. We do think we'll need subs in future years at our Welcome Center for student registration. Also note this year, we did add two positions there to help support families that need Spanish language support as well as Somali language support. The next one is 3.5 Workers' Comp and Property Insurance in the amount of $40,000 a reduction. It's reflecting just anticipated needs as we look at our workers' comp budget. 3.9 Facilities. That's a new one? No.
I think that was there.
No, that one was there, I'm sorry.
I think we're on to the next slide.
Next page, the next slide. And it is the middle school, I think we had all of these.
3.14.
Oh, 3.14. Oh, Finance, $60,820, yes. Limit travel conferences, reduce consulting fees for service no longer needed, trim supplies budget, as well as reduce one FTE clerical position with duties absorbed within the department. Due to seniority, the impact may include other departments. Next strategy, use of federal funding for current expenditures. Here is the request I'm making to use 3.2 million of ESER funds to maintain current positions for, from this year to next year. The next slide, there are no changes. This is our use of 80%. That must be set aside for funds for supplemental needs, just a clarification. The ESER funds have two ways you can spend them. 80% and 20% for the other. Please do not be confused when we're saying we're going to use 50% of the funds this year and 50% for next year. So it's 100% of the funds with the 80 and 20, we just would like to use. It's not a straight that we're going to use 10% of the 20% this year, so I wanted to clarify that. So this is my previous recommendation with updates. And I'll turn it over to Lisa for Scenario 3.
Okay, so the 80% and the 20%, these have not changed since February 18th, as Dr. Battle said, but they, they still may, is that correct?
Oh yeah, excuse me, I skipped a slide. The next slide is the 20%. And the 5%, you want to share a little bit about that other little?
Yeah.
Pot of money we've received?
Yeah, that's, it's almost about $90,000 that that grant is, and so we're utilizing some of it this fiscal year. And the remainder would be used next fiscal year, the purpose will be the same in both years. MTSS, PBIS, and tutoring, multi-tier student supports? System support. And PBIS is, I'm sorry, I just lost it. Positive Behavior Intervention Systems, thank you very much, Mina. All right, so moving on to Scenario 3. So similar to the other two scenarios that have been presented, this one is laid out very similarly as far as the numbers and the format. What is different about this than what Dr. Battle has expressed with Scenario 2 is that this is utilizing 70% of the ESER 3 80% funds, okay? So that leaves then only 30% remaining for FY '24 with this approach. There is no use of fund balance in this matter. Instead, what you see being done is right sizing is the same as well as the preliminary adjustments. But then the use of federal funds with the extra 20% of the ESER 3 80% funds coming into play in the 23-year, that then would absorb the additional anticipated extra expenditures and be used for current expenditures moving forward and not for additional uses. Does that make sense? And so that's the difference between Scenario 3 compared to Scenario 2. It does leave then 30% of the ESER 3 80% funds that would be available for FY '24. And our question is, are you comfortable with leaving only that amount for that year? The next slide is feedback, which I will then turn over to Erin Tinklinberg. And I'm going to just move over to the side.
Thank you Chair Chester and members of the board. Just reviewing some of the feedback opportunities that we've had over the last couple of weeks and included, started with input from families and staff, continued with a couple of input parent meeting nights. After the original budget proposal was presented at the end of February, then we scheduled and held two virtual staff meetings on March 1st and March 7th. At that time, on March 7th also, we created a video presentation. Unfortunately, because of the events earlier this week, that hasn't been pushed out to families yet. It is available on the website and translated versions have been created. Those will be pushed out as soon as possible. So we are going to leave the feedback, the online feedback form open until at least this time next week. So that families have a little bit longer to provide some feedback on the initial proposals. We have, we are still, we had that in-person family meeting scheduled earlier this week that was canceled. We're working on rescheduling that. I think maybe we've settled on a date. We're looking at Tuesday, next Tuesday, at the same time, 6:00 PM. So we'll push out that information as soon as possible as well. And again, right now it just says March 1 through 13th for the community feedback survey being open, but we're going to leave that open a little bit longer. Then just to give you a little bit of summary of what we've heard so far through the staff meetings and through the online survey, we've only gotten 25 responses. Again, part of that is because we probably haven't pushed it out to the staff or to families as much as we'd like. So most of those responses are probably from staff. What we asked were three questions. What are the positives that you see? What are the challenges that you see? And what are your questions? Among the things that were mentioned most often among the positives, people were excited to see the possibility of middle school athletics and activities. They liked that we were focused on maintaining class sizes and even lowering them at the primary levels, primary grades. They liked that the cuts were spread out to include administration and that we were prioritizing mental health and services, student services like cultural liaisons and school social workers and psychologists. Several people, of course, mentioned the increased mental health needs of students and families and staff members for that matter because of the pandemic. They also, the increased reading or other academic needs were also mentioned as challenges. And then in terms of questions, I always like hearing what people have questions about because it lets us know what we need to answer, what information we need to push out. People mentioned wanting to know more about what we're doing with pathways. People wanted to know more about some of the proposals like changing middle school end times. And then people wanted to know more about how COVID funds are being used and what we're doing to retain families as well. Those were some of the things that were mentioned.
I'd like to add to the challenges, Erin. The losing the compensatory funds. Staff were very appreciative after the meeting, sent me emails about how much more they knew about the impact when families do not complete those applications. And so the ideals shared, they started generating ideals. And so thank you for the staff for that. They understand how it impacts the district, but also how it impacted their school particularly. So I wanted to mention it. I know that's been a point of discussion at this board table. And so to really put more information out there about the impact, but also the support.
And I think I'll probably turn it back over to you for the timeline and finish up.
Thank you. All right, so what we have remaining is a workshop this evening to have further discussion regarding the information before you. We have one more March 24th meeting in which this information will be presented to you once again. During the month of April, we would be looking to provide notification to licensed staff of assignments for the next fiscal year. And it is June 9th when this adopted budget would be presented for FY '23 to the board with action anticipated for June 16th board meeting. And that meets our statutory requirement of having an adopted budget approved by June 30th of each fiscal year. And that concludes our presentation, thank you.
Thank you Lisa and Dr. Battle. Do board members have any comments or questions?
I'll save my questions for the workshop because I know that that's really where we're going to be having those. I think big picture, you know, sitting back and looking at this budget, you know, for the last couple of years, budgeting has not been easy, it's been painful. This year is no different. I think about the recent reports that we've received from staff. You know, we heard one from a psychologist and a social worker talking about the social emotional needs of our students and that coming out of the pandemic, there really is much more that we need to be doing. We've heard reports from Director of Curriculum and Instruction that our current curriculum and efforts are not serving the needs of our students. The testing, academic testing results are proving that out. And combining coming out of the pandemic and also thinking about events from earlier this week, my heart and my mind go to what is the nature of this budget? And, and are the adjustments that are being recommended in this budget in alignment truly with what we've been hearing from staff? And so my questions tonight in the workshop will really be to try to understand that more because there feels like a disconnect for me.
Director Werb?
Yeah, I just have a clarifying question. Being that this is like what I feel like my, I mean, last year I was really new, but I'm still really new in the whole budget aspect. For Scenario 2, when it's talking about the use of 50% of the ESER 3, does that then eliminate some of the other things we were talking about as far as reduction in staff? Does that, no? No? Okay.
So Director Werb, member of the boards, if you look at 3, it increases it to 70% this year, so it could. Lisa, do you want to add? If you add more money this year?
Yeah, we've got a lot of 50% in this breakdown here, and I know that gets a little confusing. Essentially, I'm just going to pull up a resource I have for our workshop tonight, so I have it in front of me. But the fact of the matter is, ESER 3 80% funds, that totals 12, just want to grab the number here quick. That number is a total of 12,913,245, okay? Scenario 2 utilizes 50% of that in the budget, okay? Half of it is being used towards those things that are needed in addition to our core. While the 3.2 is reflective of almost half, and that is what is being dedicated for use towards current programming and current staffing to help us offset the expenditures that exceed revenues in the budget.
Okay.
How it differs between 2 and 3 is that more, 20% more of these funds is being moved into the first year and being used for the current programming and current staffing to offset the expenditures and use no fund balance.
Or the board can choose a different combination in these scenarios.
Thank you for that.
Any other?
I think the only thing, so like with right sizing and preliminary budgets, that's still making an elimination. With the ESER 3 funds, we're asking some of it to be used for positions we currently have, not that we're using funds to add more temporarily. So we're, so without ESER 3, without any federal assistance, we would be needing to cut
Yes.
Quite a bit more out of our budget.
That's the $3.2 million you see on these slides, yes.
Okay. So that, so, and also understanding that we are likely two years down the road, another year out on the road.
Heading our way in two years.
Yes, exactly, okay. That's just what I, I just want our community to understand the special usage of this temporary revenue.
Great, seeing none, we will come back with more questions at our workshop tonight, thank you. Next, we will receive an update about District 191's efforts to implement COVID-19 related educational and public health guidance issued by the MDE and MDH from Dr. Teresa Battle Superintendent and Bernie Bean, Lead Licensed School Nurse.
Thank you Chair Chester and members of the board. Tonight Bernie Bean will share some updated information regarding the new tool by the CDC and some other information. And then I will share an update related to the Board Resolution for Face Coverings adopted Thursday, March 3rd, 2022, particularly the stipulation for pre-K learners and staff. So I'll turn it over to Bernie who will begin our slide presentation and then I will take the last slide.
So happy they're next door. Okay, thank you Dr. Battle, good evening Chair Chester and Board of Directors. As we know recently, CDC changed their metric system for monitoring COVID. They replaced the level of transmission metric with the new COVID-19 community level. The level of transmission looked at case rate and test positivity, which are metrics that measure the presence and the spread of COVID in the community. Community levels continue to utilize cases of COVID in the community along with measuring the impact within the healthcare system. The two additional metrics that they look at are the percentage of hospital beds utilized by COVID patients and new COVID hospitalization and missions. These indicators combined result in three community COVID, COVID community levels, low, medium, and high. Prevention guidance recommended by CDC and MDH is based on the community level. As I said last week, we will all get to the point of not wearing a mask and not having the disruptions of COVID. However, we are all on different paths, journeys to get to that point. So regardless of the community level, wearing a mask involves a lot of personal choice based on many factors, and that is okay and that is respected. Currently, with the new metric for monitoring community levels, both Scott County and Dakota County are classified in the low category. That means the cases are under 200 and the hospitalizations and hospital beds being used by COVID patients is less than 10%. For both Scott County and Dakota County, the past seven days, their case rate has been around 100. In areas where COVID community is, level is low, CDC and MDH recommend people, households, and communities can take minimal and practical precautions. Now on to our district data. We continue to see low numbers of positive cases. Due to such, due to these low numbers, I'm not going to divide up staff and student, I'm going to give you a combination of numbers. So the week of February 20th, two weeks ago, our total for students and staff was nine cases that were reported. Last week, we had 10 cases reported, and currently this week, we have 10 cases reported. We continue to receive our shipments of BioNext Now testing kits. Actually, this week, our second shipment arrived, which was a little over 4,000 test kits. Again, I want to thank the Operations Department for receiving, storing, and transporting these test kits to schools for distribution. We know they're only good if they're in homes. During conferences, we did a promotion of getting those kits into homes. And again, with spring break coming up, we will promote getting those into homes for students and staff. Shifting from pandemic to disease prevention model continues to anchor on mitigation practices that we have learned and we have embraced during COVID. Contact tracing and disease surveillance is a principle that was present pre-COVID and will continue post-COVID. This is public health, and it is the core to early detection of communicable illness, and it also allows us the opportunity to revisit our prevention measures as a district. Staying home when sick needs to continue to be practiced by all community members. I encourage families to reach out to your health office to, to work together to determine if your child is healthy enough to be in school and ready for learning. As we transition out of a pandemic, I also encourage families to reach out to the health, health office to talk about any specific healthcare needs for their families so we can begin some individualized health planning. And with that, I'm going to turn this slide over to Dr. Battle.
Tonight I am making a recommendation for a revision for masks. The current resolution for face coverings required for students over two years of age and enrolled in any District 191 early childhood program, including while on district transportation. This also extended to all staff and visitors. Tonight for staff, I'm recommending masks are strongly recommended for all staff while serving students in District Early Childhood Programs and for visitors to the early childhood programs. For students, I'm recommending that masks are strongly recommended. So you may ask, what has changed since last Thursday? First, I want to reiterate that my former recommendation to continue the requirement to wear masks for pre-K students was based on an abundance of caution due to these learners not having access to vaccines. This was the consensus from our District COVID-19 Advisory Group 2. Dakota County and Scott County Health officials cautioned us about removing mitigation strategies too soon and to look at a few more weeks of lower case rates. As Bernie Bean, our Lead Licensed School Nurse, has stated in the past, we have weighed the risks and benefits of each of our responses to the pandemic. So what is new since last Thursday? This week, the Minnesota Department of Health has now updated their website regarding masking to align with the CDC recommendations based on community levels. After the board meeting on March 3rd, the COVID-19 advisory team met on March 4th. At that time, Bernie Bean and I shared the resolution that was adopted by this board. We shared a few additional notes and we received input from the advisory team. Their input included acknowledging that the pre-kindergarten team would benefit from seeing a light at the end and hope that their situation will get better. People need to know there will be more evaluation to know when we can normalize and that data and information will be reviewed. Second, the current explanation was in large part that this group of students is vulnerable due to not having access to vaccination. However, it should also be noted that pre-K students attend school in pods and therefore are already somewhat isolated and protected. Next, they share their desire to be sure we set a timeline, monitor data, and remove masks for VPK in the future. At the conclusion of the meeting, I shared that I would meet with the District COVID Leadership Team, Health Team to review and possibly develop a timeline and plan. In doing so, I did seek feedback and receive feedback from
This also extended to all staff and visitors. Tonight for staff, I'm recommending masks are strongly recommended for all staff while serving students in district early childhood programs. And for visitors to the early childhood, uh, programs. For students, I'm recommending that masks are strongly recommended. So you may ask, what has changed since last Thursday? First, I want to reiterate that my former recommendation to continue the requirement to wear masks for pre K students was based on an abundance of caution. Due to these learners not having access to vaccines. This was the consensus from our District COVID nineteen Advisory Group two. Dakota County and Scott County health officials cautioned us about removing mitigation strategies too soon. And to look at a few more weeks of lower case rates. As Bernie Bean, our lead licensed school nurse has stated in the past. We have weighed the risk and benefits of each of our responses to the pandemic. So what is new since last Thursday? This week, the Minnesota Department of Health has now updated their website regarding masking. To align with the C D C recommendations based on community levels. After the board meeting on March third, the super the COVID nineteen advisory team met on March fourth. At that time Bernie Bean and I shared the resolution that was adopted by this board. We shared a few additional notes and we received input from the advisory team. Their input included acknowledging that the pre kindergarten team would benefit from seeing a light at the end. And hope that their situation will get better. People need to know there will be more evaluation to know when we can normalize and that data and information will be reviewed. Second, the current explanation was in large part that this group of students is vulnerable. Due to not having access to vaccination. However, it should also be noted that pre K students attend school and pods and therefore already somewhat isolated and protected. Next, they share their desire to be sure we set a timeline, monitor data and remove masks for V P K in the future. At the conclusion of the meeting, I shared that I would meet with the District COVID Leadership Team, Health Team. To review and possibly develop a timeline and plan. In doing so, I did seek feedback and receive feedback from early learning parents and staff. As all along during the pandemic, feedback from our parents and staff represent diverse viewpoints. These parents and staff each shared rationale and poignant personal stories for or against continuing the requirement for face covering. For our early learners. I am grateful to hear their perspectives because they helped me as I consider how to lead with the community's interests at heart. I want to address parents and staff who express concerns about medically fragile students. As we transition from a pandemic disease model to an endemic, it is important for our health professionals to reach out to families to discuss their concerns. Other new developments since my first recommendation include the fact that the positivity rate for Minnesota in our counties is below three percent. New cases are still falling and neither Dakota County nor Scott County are advising any different stipulations from C D C. As Bernie shared, the C D C updated tools released on February twenty fifth. Children ages two to five are considered for low risks of incidence of COVID according to the C D C. In Er in one ninety one. February sixth through the February twelfth, early learners here at Diamond Head, we had three cases. V P K in elementary schools, one case for a total of four. The week of February thirteenth through nineteenth, zero cases in early learners, two in V P K. The week of two twenty, the two twenty six, no cases in either any of the programs. Two twenty seven and three five, no cases, three seven and three eleven, no cases. I do want to share survey results that I've gathered so far from staff. I'm still collecting information from parents. We missed the day due to the events at Burnsville High School. So early learning parents, uh, so far guardians, uh, survey results. Approximate number of families sent the survey information is over the over six hundred. We received two hundred and thirty four responses so far as of about three thirty today. Families were sent messages via C S R and email. So if you have not, if you're watching, parents, please open and look for that survey and complete it if you have not. Families who have children for which English is not their home language. Spanish Somali cultural liaisons made efforts to contact contact families by phone. We asked this question, in terms of my child wearing a mask in early childhood classrooms. Masks should be optional for early childhood students, a hundred and fifty seven parents responded out of the two thirty four. Masks should be required for early childhood students, seventy seven out of the two thirty four. Early learning staff, I received forty one responses. I asked them, what are the benefits to continuing face coverings for pre K learners and staff interacting with them? I'll give you the top themes. So twelve of the forty one said it reduces the spread of diseases, disease in our youngest learners who cannot be vaccinated. Nine said it limits the spread of germs, all germs. Limits the spread of many illnesses because mouth and nose are covered. And also nine responses, it reduces the spread of illness. My second question, what is the downside to continuing face coverings? This year, more kids are chewing on their masks while wearing them, causing additional germs. They're not wearing them well. They won't keep the mask on. The ones who do wear their mask are wearing masks that may not are not clean. Um, it's difficult that with twenty responses out of the forty one. Then the last, the next theme was it's difficult to understand students and for students to understand teachers, fifteen. And the last theme, seeing mouths move for learning language, letter sounds. It makes speech therapy difficult. It makes it difficult when reading books. It makes it much easier to understand. Uh, it makes it much harder to understand, especially for our speech and E L L students. It's difficult for E L L and speech students to learn as they can't see mouth movements and speech is muffled, fourteen. As I said, parents are still submitting their responses and the results I gave you earlier were not disaggregated for Spanish speaking and Somali speaking families. So lastly, the new recommendation that the board will act on later. Through a resolution drafted, you see on the screen. Um, I am recommending that this, if approved by the board, would go in effect on Monday, March fourteenth. I want to assure you that we will continue to be responsive to changing in community health conditions. If health conditions worsen, where counties or our sites go into medium or high transmission. I will review the board's resolution and recommend any changes to mitigation strategies at such a time. I have one final, um, some final remarks before we move on Chair. This may be Bernie Bean's last COVID nineteen update dependent on board action tonight. So I want to thank Bernie for her courageous, steadfast and calm leadership throughout our response to the pandemic. You have led with health and safety in mind for our students and staff and it has been your priority. I remember when we first gathered, March fourteen, March fifteenth, that's Sunday. And I met you, I think for the first time in person, you have never wavered. You have spent countless hours answering questions from family and staff and students and supporting our health office staff. And you have been my rock, lifting me up and standing with me through this journey of living in a pandemic. The students and staff are better off because of your work. I am a better person and leader because I know and I work with you. You are my shero and I thank you. That concludes my report and I made it without crying. I was crying earlier today.
Oh, thank you, Dr. Battle. I'm deeply touched. Thank you. And it's been my. Privilege to be in this position to, um, promote public health and safety for the community. And I think my team of health services could not do it without them. I was not expecting this, so, um, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, yeah, there's no words Bernie for how much we value and appreciate. You leading through this pandemic with us. You summed it up well, well talked about. Um, do board members have any other comments or questions?
Go ahead.
You know, I realize we had a special meeting last Thursday. You know, coming from, you know, the healthcare world. I'm I'm used to constant change. Things can change on a daily basis. And I think that's what we have to keep in mind here. Um, if people ask why, you know, we're already reviewing another change. And at this point, I think people need to understand. They don't have to not, they they can still wear a mask. Your child can still wear a mask, no matter what our decision is. We're not saying you shouldn't wear a mask. That is not, that is not what we're deciding. It's how your situation and your family, it's all individual and it's all going to be different for every person. And we want you to keep your children safe. So if you feel like your child needs to wear a mask, they most certainly should wear a mask if they're under five. But you know, in reading information that I, because when I saw this and I was like, okay, maybe we need to re review this. I went and looked up on whose website, um, and they say other countries don't recommend children wearing masks under age five. So I'm like, well, why is other countries doing it differently, you know? So there's more information out there that, you know, we are maybe not looking at, but we have to consider. And we have to be open to other things, you know, other information coming in that we may not have currently taken into consideration. And but, you know, I know there's going to be people out there that are still going to be. Maybe not in agreement, but it is an individual decision. And you can choose to still have your child wear. I'm choosing to wear a mask right now. It is based on your family situation.
Thank you Director Wurb. Director Connor, you had your hand up too?
Yes, um, yeah, that was, um, well put Director Wurb and my same sentiment. And I am also familiar with being a peer professional for years, how special ed students do need to see your face. And do need to see your mouth when we're talking, especially the younger children when, um, they're trying to learn. Words and sounds and that type of thing. That's why I mentioned like the face shield that I chose to wear. I I do think it's critical that, um, I and I also understand about the, um, the mask and them chewing on it. I've witnessed that and they are gross in Germany. So these are all things that you got to look at too. It's not helping if it's dirty and they're chewing on it and it's slimy and spitty. From their saliva, so, um, and it's not serving the correct purpose if they're not wearing them correctly. But Bernie, I just want to tell you to, I have to comment on you. I don't know you personally. I feel like I have just through you being going through this pandemic with us. And all the information that you have put, I mean, given us. And all your work and and effort and time that you've put through and like, um, I don't know why I'm getting emotional. I just get emotional. But anyway, and you know, and and answering all these, um, the pandemic calls through parents and the the community and staff. I mean, your shoes are just full. I mean, I I don't know how anybody could fill them. So just letting you know, we really appreciate you. I want to echo that sentiment. You're not leaving. Is she leaving?
No, you rescinded the COVID nineteen reports, the current resolution. So this was.
I'll still be around, just not at this meeting.
That almost sounded like you were leaving. I just wanted to clarify that. So thank you for all your hard work.
That was actually part of my question also. I just wanted to double check.
Well, I was wondering if I didn't know something.
Because you're leaving us. It's your last report because we're not going to necessarily be getting these at every meeting. So I look forward to a future report where you just tell us what else your department does.
Hey, that would be fun.
Not COVID related perhaps. No, but seriously, thank you for, as others have said. I've been on the board for just over three years and you've been at every meeting for over two for most of the time that I've been on the board. And thank you for that. It's been reassuring. It's been calming at times just to hear your perspective and your recommendations. I appreciate that. I I'm someone who I don't consider myself an immune. The infectious disease expert, so I'd like to listen to the experts and their recommendations. And I definitely after the last two and a half years, consider you an expert. So thank you for all you have done for us over these last. Two plus years to keep our students and our staff as safe as possible during this horrible pandemic.
Thank you.
I like the word that Scott used and it's calm. And I felt like, and for me, I was in a tornado like during the whole COVID, my, you know, and then. You would start talking and I start like calming down, you know, like, like you were the soup, you know, shero of and.
Very reassuring.
Yeah, reassuring and then I got to know you and then I found out that I did know you. So I thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And communication is so important. We we went through an amazing two years of turbulence, not knowing what's happening. And just having that open communication and dissecting what the science is gives us some calmness in general. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we will, um, receive a report from Zoe Olson, Student Representative. Zoe.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, it has been a very eventful week at Burnsville High School. Um, yesterday there was a college fair at B H S where representatives of colleges from across Minnesota and the Midwest were present to share. Information about their colleges with, uh, Burnsville High School students and parents, um, especially, uh, juniors was very helpful for them. Uh, many colleges from the University of Minnesota to Hamlin University, so many different colleges were there. And gave students the opportunity to start thinking about and planning what their futures might be like after they finish high school here at B H S. Um, the whole cafeteria was full of college representatives who were able to make student, make connections with students and their families. Which was really great to see. Um, this is a wonderful opportunity for students and families to learn. And for students to get a better understanding of what they're looking for, uh, in the future. And, um, many of our families did take advantage of this opportunity. Uh, the juniors are also preparing to take the A C T on April twenty sixth at Burnsville High School. So that's very exciting. Um, and just another great opportunity for them to start thinking about the future and what future, um, educational plans they might be looking for. Um, but despite the great success of this college fair, it's been a very challenging week at B H S. Um, as I'm, you all know, um, on Tuesday, B H S students and staff had a very frightening experience as the school was put on lockdown. Um, there was a great deal of fear and anxiety among staff and students as the situation evolved. And the impact that these events have had on our school community has been apparent ever since. Um, there were a large number of students who did not attend school yesterday on Wednesday. And there was an unusual quietness among those that did. Many students and families are still wrapping their heads around what occurred. And despite announcements from school administration about what led to the lockdown, there are still a lot of unanswered questions about what happened. Students are feeling a range of emotions right now, but many students share a feeling of frustration and confusion. Although they appreciate that safety was given the utmost concern. Many students are frustrated with what we feel has been a lack of clarity regarding what has happened. And feel that many students feel that they have not been told the entire story. Uh, students would like to hear specific details about the events that took place. As of right now, there's really only been a brief explanation shared and, um. Students don't feel that they have very much more information now than they did while it was happening. Um, so just about every student that I've talked to has expressed a desire to know more details. And, um, understand that there, I'm sure are very good reasons that more details have not yet been shared. But hope that as soon as possible, more information could be revealed. Um, there's a plethora of rumors and speculation going on about what has happened, which has been, um. Well, students don't really know what to think or believe about what happened. So these rumors are just having more of a detrimental effect on students. And we hope that in the coming days. We can get more information about what happened.
Thank you Zoe. Yeah, sorry, I'm emotional too because many of us have high school students, so.
Zoe, um, we have a, the reason we have the role that you're the chair you're sitting in is to, um, give hopefully this board some insight into. Perspectives of what's going on at your school. I, you know, before you reached the end of your presentation was already preparing to make these comments. I want to applaud you on your courage. I know what you did tonight took a lot of that, um, speaking in this environment and knowing how many people are watching. You need to know that doing what you did. You need to know that doing what you did is exactly what we ask from you in your role. So, thank you very much. And you're not the only one that would like to have more information, I assure you. So, thank you very much for having the courage, fortitude, and the eloquence to speak as you did this evening. Appreciate that.
I also want to thank you. When you spoke, I heard my daughter, because those are the questions she asked me. And you're speaking, you're carrying a lot of weight. You're speaking for a lot of people here. And like Eric said, that's the reason why you're here, so then you can be their voice. Because we adults don't have a lot of answers. We think we do, but we don't. But we're learning from you guys, and you guys are teaching us a lot on how to be transparent. So, I thank you once again.
I just want you to know too, we really appreciate your time and your patience, even sitting here while we were in a closed session. I mean, and we know there's other things you could be doing, but we really appreciate your input and you coming to these meetings.
Thank you very much, Zoe. Next, we will receive a report from Dr. Teresa Battle, superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Chester, and members of the board. There are two things I would like to talk about tonight. The first is similar to Zoe's report. I want to share a little bit about the lockdown at Burnsville High School on Tuesday. Most importantly, I want to express my gratitude to staff and students at the school who responded with so much calm and did what they needed to, be safe and support each other. I want to thank the leadership at the school and here at Diamond Head. Your clear thinking during a time of potential crisis was essential to keep students and staff safe, to keep them and our families informed throughout the process, to organize resources like buses and food for students. Almost 66% of students did not have a lunch that day, and so they were very appreciative of the snacks that our food and nutrition gave them as they exited. And to coordinate with law enforcement to manage the scene. We have all too often seen and heard about these lockdown situations, but living through one gives us all a very different perspective, even though it turned out there was no physical danger. I'm proud of how our team responded in the moment and in the two-day sense, providing support to students and staff to help them process our feelings and reactions. This was a traumatic experience for many. We need to heal and know we'll heal best if we do it together. I also want to share that we are taking some time to review how we responded and how we worked with our law enforcement partners. This has already started, and it will continue in the coming days. I hope with all my heart that we will never experience this again, but it would be a mistake not to learn and be better prepared going forward. I too want to thank you, Zoe, for your report, and I will be following up to work with students to get you the, some information as I can to give you some more information. Secondly, I want to shift gears a little bit and talk about the way that we and our students are leading together. So, last week, as part of a conference, we were asked to present our approach to responding to racist incidents. First, we talked about and presented the systems we've put in place to help us respond most effectively, including our board-approved policies on equity, harassment, and violence, and our communication practices, and a tool we've developed, which is kind of a checklist that helps ensure we know what steps to take and that we do them thoroughly. But the highlight of our presentation was our Burnsville High School students. A panel of six students, members of the Black Student Union and the Asian Student Association, shared their experiences working with school leaders to respond when a racist incident occurs. They shared how important it is to have access to administration and to have their voices heard and how they've helped lead the response using some examples. They also answered questions from superintendents and school leaders from around the state. They showed so much knowledge and commitment for making things better for students at Burnsville High School. They shared their honest truths, and they had an incredible impact on the attendees at the conference. I also want to thank staff who joined me, Amina Oftedal, Director of Teaching and Learning, Brian Gersich, Assistant Superintendent, and Aaron Tinklenberg, our Director of Communications, and Dr. Chris Belmont, Administrator at Burnsville High School. Our students were such a hit that they were invited to join Angela Davis on her show on Minnesota Public Radio earlier this week, and they did the same thing, shared their experiences, but for an audience of thousands across the state. I am and we should all be incredibly proud of our students. They are leaders in our community right now, helping to build a stronger, better 191. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Now, we will hear if there are any reports from board members realizing that our next board meeting is when we do our committee and assignment report. If there's any other reports to report now, I'll open that up.
For more committees?
Next one.
Can I just do a quick assignment?
Yes, yes.
Even though it's not technically the assignment meeting, but it's deadline-sensitive.
Yes.
I just wanted to say that the deadline to nominate anyone for the 2022 Burnsville High School Hall of Fame class is coming up next week on March the 15th. The online form can be found on the ISD 191 website. And yes, if there's any outstanding former Burnsville High School students that you would like to nominate for the Hall of Fame, next week is the deadline. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Director Hume. So, now we will move to the business portion of our meeting. Although board action is required, it is generally, general, generally unnecessary to hold a discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Do board members wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda? Moved by Director Miller?
Second.
Second by Director Hume. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Next, we will move to approve on a first reading basis changes to policy 425, Professional Development. We have Amina Oftedal, Director of Curriculum Instruction Assessment, will be presenting. Welcome, Amina.
Thank you, Chair Chester, Dr. Battle, members of the board. I present to you policy 425, Professional Development. The policy was reviewed by the Policy Review Committee both in January and then with changes in February 28th. There was some new legislative language with making references to mentoring requirements that was added to the policy, and I would just present it for your first reading.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Second by Director Wurbe. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we approve on a first reading basis changes to policy 419, Tobacco-Free Environment, Possession and Use of Tobacco, Tobacco-Related Devices, and Electronic Delivery Devices, Vaping Awareness and Prevention Instruction. Amy Petrowski, Director of Student Support Services, presenting. Thank you, Amy.
Welcome. Good evening, Director Chester, Dr. Battle, and members of the board. I would like to present to you the first reading of policy number 419, the tobacco-free, with the addition of, the addition of the, adding the vaping awareness and prevention instruction. There has been updates with the definitions. We have also deleted a service manual in the cross-reference policy and updated a reference policy as well. So, I recommend that we approve the first reading of policy number 419.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Connor? Second by Director Said. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next, we will approve on a first reading basis changes to policy 607, Organization of Grade Levels. Brian Gersich, Assistant Superintendent, is presenting. Welcome, Brian.
Thank you, Chair Chester, Dr. Battle, members of the board. Do have recommended change to policy 607. This is coming from MSBA as a result of a legislative change. As Dr. Faver said earlier tonight, public schools serve students birth to 21. What this policy does is give districts permission to require proof of age. By policy, some of our programs do have age requirements, like entrance into kindergarten that do require a certain age be met. So, this gives the school district permission to ask for some kind of evidence of age. And the statutory requirement is now also added, or the statutory citation is now also added as a cross-reference. And so, it is the recommendation that the board approve on a first reading basis changes to policy 607, Organization of Grade Levels.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Moved by Director Connor? Second by Director Miller. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Brian. Next, the Board of Education is being recommended to adopt a resolution of Independent School District 191 Regarding Health and Safety Measures Face Covering.
Thank you, Chair Chester, members of the board. My recommendation tonight is that the Board of Education adopts the resolution of the School Board of Independent School District Number 191 Regarding Health and Safety Measures Face Coverings. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B, point dot zero nine vests the care, management, and control of independent school districts in the school board, and whereas the superintendent of schools is responsible for the administration of all school district policies and is directly accountable to the school board. And when, whereas when responsibilities are not specifically prescribed nor school district policy applicable, the superintendent is expected to use professional judgment, subject to review by the school board pursuant to school district policy 302, superintendent; and whereas the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, issued new guidance regarding prevention steps based on COVID-19 community levels of low, medium, or high; and whereas the COVID-19 community level in Dakota County, Minnesota, and Scott County, Minnesota, is classified as low. And whereas, since the new guidance from the CDC and after the school board's action on March 3rd, 2022, the Minnesota Department of Health issued recommendations which align with the CDC guidance without distinction based on student's age. And whereas, the superintendent met with the School District COVID Advisory Team on March 4th, 2022, during which she received additional information and advice; and whereas the incidence of COVID-19 for children aged 2 to 5 in Dakota and Scott Counties is at low risk. Now, therefore, upon recommendation of the superintendent, after her consultation with the COVID-19 advisory team, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 191 as follows. One, masks are recommended for employees when they are working with students aged 5 and older in school district buildings. Two, masks are recommended for students aged 5 or older while in school district buildings. Three, masks are strongly recommended for preschool students aged 2 to 5 while attending any District 191 Early Childhood Program or when utilizing district transportation. Early childhood programs include those held at the Diamond Head Education Center and the voluntary pre-k, pre-kindergarten programs in neighborhood schools. Four, masks are strongly recommended for all staff and transportation personnel while serving and/or transporting students in district early childhood programs and for visitors to the early childhood programs. Five, the foregoing recommendations in numbers 1 through 4 are effective March 14th, 2022. Six, the superintendent is hereby authorized after consultation with the school board chair and notification of the school board to implement different mask requirements within the school district or any specific school building without school board action if the superintendent reasonably believes that immediate implementation is necessary and that constraints of time and public health considerations render it impractical to hold a school board meeting prior to the change. Any change in mask requirements shall continue in effect until the next school board meeting at which the change is addressed.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Miller, second by Director Hume. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That concludes the regular scheduled meeting of the School Board of 191, and we are adjourned to a workshop for FY '23 Budget Development. We will take a 10-minute break and reconvene at 8:50. We will take a ten-minute break and reconvene at eight fifty. Now we will start our, our workshop, um, regarding a deeper discussion, um, and giving direction regarding FY twenty-three budget development. So we have Dr. Battle and Lisa.
Great, thank you. Um, we're open to questions. Um, I think we covered all of the slides and so we're open for questions and a discussion. And then final direction for staff, Amy.
Okay, Director Connor.
Yeah, I had a question on, um, I think it was scenario, it was either three or two. Um, you mentioned a, I mean, it said understaffing VA specialists and clerical VA. I'm just wondering how pertinent those positions are. And they don't seem like it would be a big cost saving, but I'm just wondering.
Scenario three or the list of adjustments?
The list of, um, the list of jobs, let me, maybe I should pull that up myself.
And also I forgot to mention Lisa can pull up the interactive model. If you want, so.
I think we would appreciate that too, especially if we need to consider the, um, other side balance.
Okay, so Director Connor, you can show me which.
Okay.
Is there associated number like one point one or four point, that would help.
Yeah, I should have had that up before I asked you that, but I didn't. Um, well, somebody can go ahead and I'll find it.
Lisa, you have the handout. So I, we have handouts so you don't have to keep searching.
Oh.
If you don't have to open it up too.
And it might be bigger.
You see it on here. You see it on here. No, just as they ask.
Cause it's right, it would be right here. It was, yeah, it was the one with the, with all the job.
The federal?
That's it, yeah, the funds for, yeah, the Esser, yep, that one, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So it's the Esser three twenty percent slide, Lisa.
Mm-hmm, twenty, yep.
And the five percent, and your question was about the, which line? Cause that one doesn't have numbers.
The VA specialist and the, um, the clerical VA, right under it.
Oh, Virtual Academy.
Oh, that's what that is.
Yes, so when we had the influx of students at the beginning, we didn't have enough clerical.
Yeah, no, that's very pertinent. Okay, I just didn't know.
Know what's gonna happen.
Right, no, that's very pertinent, okay.
That's what it was.
I just get my acronyms messed up. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
They split with tech because of all their increased responsibilities with going from a two to one for early, for elementary to a one to one.
Yes, absolutely.
So they split a clerk. Do you have any other questions?
Well, I just really wanna, yeah, I wanna still, I'm trying to still wrap my brain around the whole, the FTEs and, and like, so what, what changed with the special education?
So previously I had the reduction under the second sections, excuse me, third preliminary adjustments. So after, uh, questions from board and our further review, it really was due to rightsizing. It's not she's recommending any efficiencies, it was all about the projected enrollment. So Amy, did you want to add more? And initially she thought based on enrollment and the current rollover student needs, it might be more ten point five positions. But then we discussed that we don't know who's gonna come to our district. And so we really should consider that and then our maintenance of effort. We have been in communication with our Minnesota Department of Ed contact who has been talking about us because as I said, uh, one of the reasons to not meet maintenance of effort is decreased enrollment. And so he's walked, he's walked us through that and how you manage when you don't know upcoming needs. So go ahead, Amy.
Um, well, I guess, um, I could, do you repeat your question? I make sure I understand your question.
Well, I was just questioning the difference, what changed from the last time we looked at it to now with the special education.
So in the, one of the ones, and so if it, the part that we had it in there, we had separated it out. So it was all included in the first one, right?
We had it below before and we only had the two twenty with a one to three.
And it was less amount, the two twenty.
Yep, and so at the last board meeting, I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think that the, um, two point five and the educational assistance, we had rolled them into the one point one for, um, staff efficiencies. That's where it was at. And then after the last board meeting, we broke them up and brought them down to the bottom. So it was more clear about exactly, we're more transparent about what we were exactly cutting. I think it made it more clear about the conversation.
But the dollar amount doubled, the, the FTE, I mean essentially there was one line that was two twenty thou, two hundred and twenty thousand under initial adjustments. Now that's been moved up to rightsizing with an additional reduction of over two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars.
Initially Amy hadn't include the paraprofessionals, cause we do it later.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
We doing it earlier, that's what the change was. We've identified the EAs.
So it's, it is unusual to have a line item switch categories like this. Typically, when you present, um, reductions as part of a budget, the dollar amount might change, you know, iteration to iteration. But it's a little unsettling for me to see a line item switch from something that is more optional and under review to something that's hardwired and, uh, rightsizing.
I think that the conversation that we heard from the board members on the last meeting indicated that where we had it was confusing people because it is rightsizing that we're doing. And we had not considered that it probably belongs up at the top instead of where it was originally, which is.
And we also heard that if we know about a reduction, we should add it.
Yeah.
So that's why we include, cause we knew about it.
So for future, if it's rightsizing, it needs to be rightsizing. I mean.
We're doing our best.
Okay, so I need a, can I ask something clarifying as far as rightsizing? Because if you're talking about it being reduced due to, uh, reduced enrollment, you're talking about a special group of students, but you don't necessarily know that we're gonna have less special education students. That's making an assumption that you can't.
Yeah, like I said earlier, it's very complicated. That's why we talk with the state. Are we using the right formulas, right?
But there was something during the presentation that highlighted the need for EAs in the elementary school, so.
So I have a proposal, I'm still vetting from the elementary principals to add educational assistance, just like I had the middle school proposal to add back sports. They have submitted a proposal.
So.
But that would implicate here.
We're.
It may if I discern the change about the twenty-fourth.
Dr. Battle, can I just clarify about the elementary principal's proposal for educational assistance is not necessarily related to special ed? They are general education, paraprofessionals, not special education paraprofessionals.
Okay. Have a seat, Amina. Have a seat.
I just. We'll be asking questions.
Yeah.
I just wanna make a comment that it just looks, I don't know. It's part of our legislative platform for special education. And then we're cutting special education? That just looks bad.
Because we don't have the funding they promised us, the cross subsidy.
So is it rightsizing or is it the cross subsidy?
Well.
Or maybe Amy can, can speak.
Yeah.
So one of the things that, um, one of the things that it makes it very difficult is to project for special education. And we have projected some numbers for special education, knowing what we have in our buildings right now. We can project, we can project that our fifth graders will move on to sixth grade. We can project that our seventh graders will move on to eighth grade. And so we know the numbers of students that we have in our buildings today. What we, what makes it difficult to project is the students that are moving in and out of the district. It's difficult to project the, um, kindergartners coming in. So we know that we have about a ten percent, um, special education for resource staff. For example, just the resource staff. The, um, our site-based programs are much more individualized and have a little bit more, I mean, there's much more conversation, teaming that goes around them before we, um, move a student to a more restrictive placement, okay? Now, when we have a student on an IEP, as you know, we are bound by law to provide those services, okay? We know that and we do that, we provide it. And so throughout the year, I'm constantly, and my team is constantly adjusting based off the students that come into our district on a day-to-day basis or move out of our district on a day-to-day basis, okay? So we are constantly doing that on a regular basis. What we do know, and I don't have the numbers, um, for this year's projected added together, what I have them added together as is, is by level. So by high school, by middle school, and by my elementaries, each of the buildings, I've got them projected out. I don't have that final total number. And the reason that I kinda don't have that final total number, even though it kinda gives us a big picture of where students drop, it doesn't necessarily give me the big picture of how many students are going to be at Harriet Bishop, for example, or Ron Elementary. And so those are kind of the things that we are looking at when we make these. But, but know that, um, we do adjust and, and we understand those pieces for us. And right now, today, these are the recommendations that I can make at the board. In September, if anything changes and I'm not able to find that staffing somewhere else, I will be talking with Dr. Battle and will be coming to you and will be asking for whatever the needs might be above and beyond what I already have. So, um, rightsizing in my mind, being in special education for many years, rightsizing is, is what the students are there and what they show today. And if there is staff that right now, today, I'm not predicting that I need them in September, that is, that, that is where I'm here in front of you and asking or making my, um, presentation, I don't know what it is, recommendation, maybe?
So what you're saying then is if I'm looking at our enrollment numbers that were presented in November for special education students, there was a three-student drop from, uh, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one for special ed students.
Say that one more time.
We lost, according to the enrollment report that we received in November, we lost three students year over year from FY twenty-one to FY, projected FY twenty-two.
Three students? Three students? That's not the data that I have.
It might not be, but that's what was presented to the board.
Special education enrollment, the state does not use fall count. They use the unduplicated count in December, December 1. They use a separate timeline because in October 1st, there are too many students that are still being evaluated or unsure yet as to what exactly those services are going to be for the rest of the year. So special education utilizes the unduplicated account for purposes of looking at it from like a fall count perspective. Like Stacy does, what he's doing his staffing. That's special ed. At the end of the year, they do a look back, similar to what you see with that In-N-Out report. You look back at special education through the maintenance of effort report. And that's what I've handed out to you, six years of information about that maintenance of effort report. This is tried and true, all the students, even the partials. So if the students only with us for three months out of the year, you're only going to see a part of them there. But accumulated altogether, the total ADMs of everyone added together, that's what you're seeing there as far as the number served. And you see that on the row that basically shows the students with IEP serve birthday at age 21. That is the count, and this count is different from the unduplicated count because the unduplicated count is like a headcount. And this is the count as to how many students were actually served, down to the minutes and the hours that they were served. So given that information, the state compares our count of students to the expenditures that we have through state aid. And that's where this formula must be used and they need to make sure we're maintaining effort. We've never had an issue with maintaining effort in the past. We're going to run into a move forward because we don't have enough students where our expenditures are going to keep up. They're going to keep up, our expenditures are going to keep up because of inflation. We are at that point. So in our conversations with Paul Taylor this last week, this last week.
He's the Minnesota Department of Ed.
Monday, I want to say, it might have even been this week. It might have been Monday, yep.
So his conversation with us is how can we use the federal funds that we're currently using that we now have some people paid for out of special ed in federal? And their point is they're now talking to districts because we're not alone in this. A lot of districts are running into this now where their numbers all dropped because of the pandemic. Now, they may all come back up eventually here, but they're going to ease up. The problem we're all running into now is we have a threshold that's higher than what we can sustain. So what they're talking to us about is, for example, if I have 100,000 I'm using federal funds for and I move those 100,000 dollars over to state, that adds more money to my expenditures for state funding, doesn't change anything about the people I'm paying for, but allows the federal funds then to be used for our tuition bills. And when I use it for our tuition bills, that means then that I have more money in the state area and I'm getting 60 cents on the dollar. So the next year I'm going to get more aid. So it ends up helping us if we use more state than federal. But the key is if you anticipate that you need to bring down some expenditures in the future, his message is make sure you don't use all this and move it all right away. You want to do it in a year in which you know you're going to see those costs go down and you want to show the federal then costs can bring you it back up. So you stay level and you maintain your effort. That's the dilemma we're in and that's what we have to think about moving forward.
Well, the other thing I would just like to add is that every student comes to us with definitely different needs. So we do have some students with some pretty significant needs through medical fragile, just multi-different disabilities that they might have. And so a student like that requires additional where other students do not. So it isn't a headcount. It's, it's not the same staffing as what maybe some other departments are able to do with just a headcount. We need to look at each individual student and make those decisions. And we, we do that throughout the year as we get, you know, students that even qualify for special education.
So earlier I talked about there's different criteria used. I mentioned teachers, custodians. As you just heard, there's multiple criteria and things you have to balance with our special education students.
Is a student with an IEP considered special ed though?
Yes, it is. Yep.
And you have to remember, they generate all stu, general fund dollars first. So they have access to services for general fund that's being inclusive. And then you get the additional funds to support their specialized needs.
Are we considered fully staffed for special ed right now?
No, we're not, we are not considered fully staffed because I haven't been able to fill all the openings right now.
So the same situation Dr. Favor talked about?
So I'm just confused. How can we be cutting when we're already short-staffed?
Well, I guess I don't really consider it a cut because I consider it more of a right size. If, if, even if we weren't cutting, if the district was not in the situation that we're in right now, these are positions that we are not, we are not projected to need next year. And so even if we were in a situation that we were not right now, I would be coming with this recommendation regardless because of the efficiencies and some of the, the students that are projected to be here next year.
And the unfilled may for that, maybe for that small group of students with that specialized need that actually needs just that particular person's licensure. But we would still look for them, yeah, so.
They cannot be reallocated to these open positions.
Yes, those, so I don't, I don't foresee anybody actually losing a position because I will reallocate some of those positions that I'm looking at moving to a different. Those people will move into a different position, possibly same position, maybe a different building. Maybe the same building, but maybe a different program.
So ultimately, the right sizing could largely come from not filling positions that are currently open.
Yes.
Once you do all the reshuffling of the deck.
Yes, yes. Yep. I, I think that there's probably a pretty good chance that we will be continuing to hire because we're not able to fill the positions that we will have open, just with our staff leaving. You know, there, our staff resign, our staff retire, our staff are, I have educational assistants that are retiring. That opens a position there because I'm not moving that position.
So of all the open positions, we're essentially saying that 6.5 of them are really not going to continue to try to pursue to hire.
Not, not this year. Probably not this year.
And so that's why after tonight, March 14th, what we decide, before spring break, we have to know the staffing so we can meet that April 4th through the 8th. Then we can really know, then she'll know. Because with every day, retirements come in, people resign, removing new positions.
So then, not to get too much into the weeds, but these are open positions this year that are unfilled, right, for the better part of the year?
And they're open because we, we don't need them. So the 0.5 speech is a position that we have chosen not to fill because at this time, we don't need it at that particular building. And we are projecting that we're not going to need it next year based on the numbers that we have.
So the salary for that position this year will be kind of held as a, as a credit, I assume, in your, in your department?
I guess I got to refer to Lisa for that.
The actual cost will be less for the time period. Any position that is posted that's not filled will show it's in the budget. So when you come through the audit, that's where you get some of that, you know, difference, that variance that we experience every year. That's what this is a result of.
Along with same lines though, the instructional and support staffing under right sizing, how many of those are open unfilled positions right now of the 22.5 staff FTEs?
Yeah, so Stacy, how many open positions do we still have? Is that your question?
Yes.
Yep, okay. So we started the year with like 75.
I can make room for you.
Outside of special ed and the couple of positions that she has in the speech, licensed school nurses, our instructional areas are, are filled. Our buildings are running with what they're needing.
So there's no teacher open positions, nothing?
Not that I'm aware of off the top of my head, not that anything where the buildings haven't been able to manage around or re-slot classes. Right now, we have current openings for like long-term subs for different types of leaves, things along those lines.
So Amy, question on positions, specific positions and their responsibilities? Just to understand better what exactly is, is, has been reassigned and what that might look like. Specifically, 3.17, the data and assessment coordinator. And then, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Amina. And then the other one was the psychologist position.
So we had a resignation for the data and assessment coordinator. And the position was posted. While the position was posted, there did not appear to be candidates that could fill that position. However, in the CISA department, the, there was, as we parsed out the different responsibilities and the areas of duties, the most significant area in order to make sure that we are meeting all of our state reporting and state assessment deadlines, goals, requirements, is to have a district assessment coordinator. And within the CISA department, we, we have a person who has that kind of experience and was able to move into that portion of that person's job, of that portion of the data and assessment coordinator. Other responsibilities within that, we have parsed out each one of those and reassigned them. The CISA coordinator, who is our secondary coordinator for curriculum, will continue with some of the responsibilities as secondary coordinator and then take on the district assessment responsibilities. The other responsibilities are being parsed out to others, including Dr. Funston, who has extensive experience in secondary curriculum and in curriculum development, clearly, and is able to take over some of those ongoing curriculum projects. Other duties are being reassigned to either building staff or to other coordinators to ensure that the district assessment coordinator required pieces are being completed.
So I guess this is where part of the conflict comes in for me because in the Q and A document that we received, there was a question about, you know, administrative cuts and district level cuts. And one of the, the explanations given was that there can't be cuts at that level because of mandated reporting. And yet here we are talking about very clearly a position that I will call out is in teaching and learning. This is all about our core job. And there is mandated reporting. So I guess my question is, are we better off with it parsed out across different, different positions? Or I tend to think that we had that position, that one FTE for a good reason.
Amina, let me share some information that went into my decision to accept that reorganization when we looked at it. So the previous person who had the job, we have exit interviews. They can complete a form or they can meet with me directly. And that's one of the suggestions she had was to relook at that role because it's mostly compliance, where we really wanted to have it transformational, focused on equity and looking at multiple measures. And so the person leaving said it should be looked at and how, and make a decision because the compliance pieces, that can be done by others in the department. So that was a part of what I learned too.
So how are we innovating? Help me understand how we're innovating by, like, can you give a couple of examples of how that change is going to be innovative for us?
So we're going to meet the mandated requirements. And I do believe the other two people have shown innovation in their current roles. And so one of the purposes to actually look at each department through this cross-functional team for the budget managers to look at their budgets and to make decisions. And so that was a conversation we had and that we could reorganize in that way.
I get that. I'm just looking for an example that you could provide for how this would be innovative. What, what is, what is.
I don't know that the goal is innovation for this. This is about reducing.
Maybe I'm not understanding.
Structurally balanced budget.
But you had.
I was saying that original.
Got it.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. That's the way we envisioned when we hired that person.
Right.
How do we, how does it really be innovative and not just compliance?
Right, because the.
Okay, I'm sorry. It was pretty much.
Right. And while the, in that position, we really wanted to envision that innovative person
who could continue to move us past assessment coordinator to data and assessment and research and really, and the person who was in that position worked very, very hard to bring to, to heal, for example, information about our discipline data and, which steps completely out of assessment, but it is about data and research and examining how we calibrate our, our behavior responses, how we record those, and then how do we analyze that particular data? And we had been working on that for two years now with really some excellent changes to the student handbook and, you know, some of those kind of adaptive changes in how we're beginning to move to a more restorative, practice-based response to behaviors. That's the piece that, that we will, we will end up being very slow with our progress on that simply because we do not have a person who is centralized to work in discipline data, assessment data, assessment professional development along with all of the compliance reporting. And so not filling that position for this year is a way for us to really think about how do we want to reorganize? How do we want to get to that place where we can really parse out that compliance component and instead look at research and evaluation? It is also one of the very few positions in the entire CISA department that is wholly funded through the general fund. The other positions are funded through categorized funds. And so this was a way to really take a look at is how we can contribute to, having the attrition contribute to balancing the budget.
But looking ahead, you're saying, again, trying to innovate with, within the department. Does that mean another reorg? I mean, certainly you're not going to add the position back.
Oh, yes, we will.
It's going, yeah.
Yes, we will. Right now, what we are trying to do is balance the budget, use the resources that we have, and also look at the big picture as to what's going to happen in the next year, two years, or three years, and how we might look at reorganizing throughout the system. So right now, we are saying, all right, we're needing a budget reduction and we're trying to maximize the maximum amount of dollars that we can make that happen with, okay? To do that this year, we're saying we're not going to fill this position. We're going to push the responsibilities out. One of the things that we were looking at doing was taking a Level 3 EA that is 217 days and moving them up to 261 to take care of many of the responsibilities of the, the assessment person that is more clerical by nature and hand those off. I can't do that right now because now I have other strings that are being pulled that if I try to do something here and make this person a Level 4, now all of a sudden that person risks getting bumped because of an elimination over here. So looking at the big picture of everything, it's a fine dance to try to balance the budget, look down the road, over the horizon a little bit, saying, okay, if we move this piece. look down the road, over the horizon a little bit, saying, okay, if we move this piece now, knowing that this is going to happen over here, when we have that vacancy, we're going to restructure that, bring back our assessment person, get our, capture our savings there, a little bit more savings, get those responsibilities more aligned with where the direction is for the vision of going forward with the district. Some of this stuff is just sliding things around. We're able to save money for the short term. The need is still there. We're going to come back to it. But we're going to come back to it once we have other resources freed up to make it happen.
That's a better explanation than just data on a piece of paper. Thank you.
But that's, that's the sausage. And I'm sorry. And I mean, that is, all of the intricacies and everything else that's kind of going into this whole messy process. So, we're trying to reach a balanced budget and meet the needs of all the different programming that's going on, right sizing as it aligns, making sure we understand what the metrics says are for the different types of positions and how we're going to need to use those. Because based upon things that happened tonight, one of the things that isn't on the list that the department is already well aware of, I may not need a custodian. So, things change all the time, daily. And every time we have a vacancy here, every time we have an opportunity, we reevaluate. Is this a position that needs to be brought back as it was? Is this a position that needs to be modified? Is this a position where some of those jobs no longer need to occur? How do we reevaluate? How do we post? And how do we fill and move forward?
So, the psychologist.
The psychologist, yes. You asked about what the duties are of a psychologist?
The roles and role and responsibilities of that position that's being proposed for reduction.
Yep, absolutely. So, the typical role of a school psychologist is to be on, is part of the evaluation. That's the majority of their duties is to evaluate students. And in addition to that role, is there part of the, what we call the MTSS, or the multi-tier system? And that is the, they're part of a team, of the stat team for those pieces. And they provide really good information on resource-based interventions for, as part of that team. As a school psychologist, their job is to ensure that our evaluation are in compliance, they're carried out. They are providing information to the resource teachers, the special education teachers regarding the needs of those students. And so, the majority of their job is to do evaluations, initial evaluations and reevaluations. As some of you may know, students are reevaluated every three years. We're mandated by law. So, if I have, if I have 30 students in a building, I can assume that probably 10 of them will most likely be reevaluated. And so, that's how we take a look at the projections for our school psychologists. What we don't know is the number of initial evaluations that are going to be required based on the students that come to us or the general education. So, that's kind of those we
So, thank you for that. That's helpful. Again, looking back at what we just went through with the pandemic, look at the information that this board has received about how social, emotional needs of students are increased, given the role of this psychologist. Why would this be on the reduction list? Because it's bigger than just the evaluation. Evaluation is definitely part of it. But the role itself has the opportunity to provide better support for students along with their colleagues.
It does. It's just that currently isn't the role of a school psychologist. And so, we have social workers in the buildings that provide that. We have counselors in the building that also provide that. The school psychologist works with the team. And if there is a need, they can provide that piece as well. It isn't a part of their role in their daily, you know, some are able possibly to meet with a small group to provide some of that service. But the majority of those are handed off to the school social workers and the counselors.
Then things have changed since the psychologists were moved out into the schools. My understanding is that, yes, you know, what you describe is for sure, you know, what the psychologist was responsible for. But the nice to have, was all the other, the additional parts. And I think, for me, you know, okay, so maybe you don't need them for evaluation. I think we've heard loud and clear from staff that something like that role could definitely be leveraged to support our students.
Well, I can speak to that directly because I work directly with the school psychologist at my daughter's school. So, my question is, if that school psychologist isn't there, who am I speaking with?
Your, if your school psychologist is not there. So, every school will have a school psychologist in it still.
Okay.
Yep. So, right now, in the elementaries, what they do is we do five. So, most, all school psychologists have two elementary buildings. We still will have staffed one school psychologist at each of the middle schools. And we will have two school psychologists still staffed at the high school. The high school also shares BOZ, which is a smaller school, but they also are able to go to BOZ. There's some FTEs for that as well. So, every building will have a school psychologist in it. The position that I am proposing that is cut is when we went down buildings in 2020, when we closed some buildings, and we hit a pandemic, when we were talking about staffing, the decision was to hold on to an additional school psychologist because we knew in March that we were not able to complete evaluations. We were not able to continue on because students were at home and we had not been provided guidance on how to complete those evaluations, keeping students and staff safe. So, all those evaluations were put on hold. So, when we came back, we knew we would continue to have evaluations throughout the following. Those evaluations didn't stop. Plus, we had evaluations. So, that additional school psychologist was kept as a buffer to help support knowing that we would have a lot of evaluations when we returned to school in the fall, in October. And we had no idea how long it was going to take to catch up for that piece. So, the original plan was to go down school psychologists based on the number of buildings that we were closing. However, because of the pandemic, we did hold on to an additional one for those supports. So, no building is going to be without at least a .5 FTE, except for BOZ. I think it's a .1. They go over there for reevaluations.
Okay. But now that you're saying what you just said
Mm-hmm.
about needing it for the pandemic, but now we've increased mental health issues, aren't we having more evaluations done now than probably we were previously?
I guess I'm not hearing that. I'm not seeing that. We do have evaluations that are continuously going on. I haven't heard that they have been, you know, gone up that much higher than what we typically do in the spring regardless. And so, that's, I can check in with that, Director Wurbe. I really can. But that is, it can be assumed that that is going to happen. But I'm not hearing that those initials are coming through.
Okay.
And, and maybe, you know, that's information that would typically come to me. So, I'm not hearing that right now.
Do we still go through the process of identifying a number of interventions
Yes.
before we go through assessments, making sure that the event is a localized event and not necessarily chronic over time as to why the behavior or the issues are occurring before we move students towards evaluations?
Well, but to clarify the term evaluation, evaluation isn't necessarily a mental health assessment.
Yes.
It's for special ed, special ed services.
That's correct.
That's what I'm referring to.
Mental health needs do not necessarily equal a disability.
Right.
Right.
And so, evaluations are for disabilities, not for mental health needs. For mental health needs, we have our social workers, our counselors, our in-house therapy.
That's what I was going to try to say to you, but they just
Pedway.
Pedway.
Yes. So, we're doing in-school therapy
Right.
for students who may be with mental health needs. But those necessarily, aren't necessarily students who need a school psychologist to do an evaluation for an IEP.
The initial.
Yes.
That makes more sense.
And then, so with the extra person that we had, were they assigned to, was, I mean, maybe it's not filled, but I'm assuming, was the staff person assigned to a school? So, like, is there a reduction at all within the schools or was this person as an add-on? And they just happened to be offered here to catch up on all of the IEP evaluations?
They, this particular school psychologist was housed out of Eagle Ridge. And when the retirement came, we moved a school psychologist that was housed out of Nicollet to Eagle Ridge, where we had originally had two. But really, the school psychologist, they kind of worked together to make sure that the evaluations were being completed. So, it was a really good team effort. They were housed out of Nicollet, but they floated between multiple buildings.
So, someone just caught my ear though. So, this is also part of somebody retiring? So, their goal is not to actually fill a position due to a retirement?
Well, it's, it's, the, it's not, I guess, it's a position that I don't know if we need right now.
But it's, but it's a filled position.
But what's prompting it is you're not, you're not pursuing like we're going to need to hire for because somebody is already elected, is retiring essentially.
Right, right.
Someone who's currently working is not going to lose their job because the position is already been open because they retired.
Yes, you are correct, Director Hume. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
If that's what you were trying to say.
Yes, that's exactly what I was trying to say. Anything else? I have
I have lots of more things. I've just been
Yeah, okay.
I'm going to speak. There's just been a lot of speakers.
Because I, go ahead. Because I was going to switch to Virtual Academy, but you go ahead.
I'd like to discuss 1.1. So, we have 22 and a half FTEs called out here. The rationale is projected 217 fewer students. First of all, just assuming for a second that those all students existed in one area in the district, which we know they don't. They're coming universally across the district, different grades, different buildings, et cetera. But about on average, 25 students a room, you're looking at about nine FTE directors, instructions, teachers would be responsible for, or connected to the loss of 217 students. I understand there are associated other roles that go along with, you know, that are connected to that. But I'm struggling really hard to understand how we get up to 22.5 on the rationale of a projected loss of 217 students. Because you have different class sizes at different levels. So, your elementary grades, you'll, you'll end up losing, I can't remember what the number is, a certain amount of staff at the elementary level because your fifth grade is going up that's larger than what you have coming in at the lower grades. Then, your, your class sizes for your middle school and your high school become larger as far as the calculation that we put staff at. So, that's, it's just a, kind of plugging in the different numbers for the formulas as far as like, okay, at the high school, I am now expecting less than 2,000 students. With 2,000 students, that's the other part of it, is the number of periods within a day and the resources that that requires. So, if I now have 2,000 students at the high school, a little bit less, how many, and I have five periods when teachers are teaching, but I have, those 2,000 kids are taking seven periods of courses, how many FTEs do I still need based upon a class size of 30, 35, 36, as far as what the formula works? And again, that's all before your compensatory allocation, your EL, special ed, all of those types of things. So, your classes then start dropping from that. It really is because you're looking at the number of classes that need to be covered, periods within a day, class sizes, your grades moving up, and what was the size of the grade as it moves through the system? So, how many students are you losing at that way at the different grade levels? Your elementary next year is probably going to be fairly stable if we get our 650 kids for kindergarten. It's the other secondary high schools that are going to decrease in the population. And again, because the class sizes are larger, we're going to take a larger hit there. We won't need as many teachers.
Do you know the, what the breakdown would be of any reductions with Virtual Academy in this 22.5?
A number. They're, right off the top of my head, I don't know, but there are a number. Because we received, we sent out notices like we do with registration and when we have students that are use a variance to a different school, when they go from fifth grade to a middle school, we always reach out to them and say, hey, Gideon Pond is your school that you chose to go to. However, Hidden Valley is your resident school. If you don't let us know, we're going to send you back to Eagle Ridge and not Nicollet. You won't follow up. So, during that process, that's where we get some saying, yep, I want to still do a variance to Nicollet. I'm going to stay with my, the students that I've been with. We sent out notifications also to our Virtual Academy students saying, we're doing our enrollment for next year, projections, please respond. Let us know how many are, that are planning to go up. We got about a 20% return, I believe, on that. And we're sitting right now, just about 120 students K-12. Now
Comparative to what now?
We're close to 470, I believe.
We started with the 600, remember?
So, we dropped down to about 15 FTEs K-12 for V8. One of the things is, I don't think we're going to be as large as we are right now, but I also don't think we're going to sit at 100 students. So, we're still planning on probably a little bit of a drop in that, but we're not staffing as high as what we are right now. Also, the other thing is, if we're moved away from the pandemic, we're not going to just take every student that comes in. We will cap at 40 until, and hold at that number so that we don't go over the state statute for the 40 students per
Per class, for V8 class. Yep, okay.
Okay. And until we get enough to justify adding another section or another class at that level. So, we may hold at 40. If we get 20 kids on a waiting list, that takes us up to 60. We can split that so we have two classes of 30. So, to where it's functional. High school is a little bit different. Middle, high school will be the one that's different. Students that are looking at a full-time registration in V8, that's all they want to do. It's all, all this and all, all, all the time. Those will have first priority for our Virtual Academy classes. Then, students who are wanting to take the one-offs, if you will, supplement what they're doing in person. We will put them on a waiting list till probably until July, later July, to know, yep, we have room in Language Arts 10, Virtual Academy for five more students that want to take it. So that we're maximizing our resources with our teachers and the class sizes without going over. So, back to my question. I understand that, what you said. I still have a hard time accepting that those numbers people out. I would like to see some of these puts and takes underneath this that you talked about. The math just does not add up for me. I know that we have had a loss every year of students. I don't know if it's 217 or what the exact number was, but that's fairly constant year over year. I don't remember, and you could correct me with some evidence otherwise, that we've cut 22 and a half FTEs out in teachers strictly because of student loss. In pre-pandemic years, we had very challenging conversations around cutting French 3 and 4, cutting strings at the fifth grade level. These were targeted things we took out of our program because we recognized that that's how we had to find the money. Now, we're finding out that we could simply just do it by, you know, adjusting for the degradation of the loss of students. And I'm struggling to understand that. I really am. Right, just some information that might help here. And I can get that information for you folks sent up very quickly. I have kind of my charts for the class sizes and what that looks like. The last two years, the fiscal years
So, which side do you want them to look at, please?
I'm giving them the side up that I want them to look at. So, if it has a date at the bottom, you're on the wrong side. So, for the last 10 years, the last, I'm sorry.
It's okay. We can take care of ourselves.
I can look at this table. There you go. The last 10 fiscal years, just kind of shows what our enrollment was. Starting off in 2013, we're at 9,478 students. Goes all the Goes all the way across to seven-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirteen students for FY twenty-two. So a decline of two-thousand-sixty-five students, a decline of twenty-one point seven-nine percent over the ten years. The categories up above are the different bargaining units, the number of FTEs that we had in those bargaining units and the reductions that we've had also over ten years, okay? Couple of units that I want to point out to you is unaffiliated and tech. Tech, we had a department of two individuals and then they organized and became a union. When they became a union, we had, uh, buildings that had a tech EA in every building. Those tech EAs, educational assistants, got absorbed into the technology unit. So that's why you see a sudden increase in that unit. Unaffiliated has absorbed a number of different folks over the years. Our cultural liaisons used to be bilingual EAs, so they were in the education assistant unit. We had clerical staff that became our bursars and registrars, so they went into unaffiliated. Some of our deans that don't have a teaching license, we put under this group. Our licensed practitioner nurses and our registered nurses are in this unit. Um, I'm in this unit, um, so some of your executive leadership coordinators, some directors, um, are also in here. So there's, there's quite a few different folks that are in this area and most of them came from the other bargaining units. But over the time, you can see exactly, you know, where, how many reductions we've had over the ten years, what percentage that reflects, um, and, and how that plays out. So on the backside then is kind of, there was a lot of conversation around special ed. So did the same thing with special ed. These are all the different positions that are funded under special ed, clerical, DWA, EA, teachers unaffiliated, okay? So back in two thousand thirteen, we had, um, IEP clerks. So these were clerical positions that helped the teachers with, um, setting up the meeting dates, the times, um, filing the IEPs, getting the mailings all sent out, things along those lines. Part of the process of trying to gain efficiencies was, it's like, do we want to spend our money on clerks? Or do we want to spend our money on teachers and other support? So we eliminated those positions and streamlined it down to really just the core of Amy's clerical support team at, at the district level. DWA, um, we moved, we had a, um, we went from way back when, when we had Vail. If you've ever heard the name Vail in conversations, at that point in time, we had a director and we had an assistant director. The assistant director was in charge of Vail and the director was overall. But there, we had a bunch of coordinators, okay? We made the switch, we, instead of having multiple tiers, because it became confusing for teachers, we went to the director and supervisors. So that the, the teachers knew exactly where they could get their support over time. So your DWA number has increased from the two up to the four-point-five. The four-point-five are your four supervisors and your director that we currently have. The point-five was the change that we made this year, part of that innovation that came up, where we are taking the, the, um, supervisor that's an ECSE and allowing them to also work with our early learning ECFE programs downstairs. So part of that becomes funded through community ed, that's why it dropped to point-five in those areas, okay? EAs, our EAs have actually increased in special ed over the last ten years as well as our teachers. Unaffiliated has stayed roughly the same, but it's shifted as to who's in there. Again, in the early days, we had coordinators, now we have, in there, we have a two behavior analysis, we have a, a physical therapist. And who am I missing? There's another, oh, some of your RNs and LNs that are in that position that's funded through special ed. So you can kind of see again the change in enrollment and what our staffing has looked like in this area. And over the last four years, three, four years, we have made reductions in special ed. We have, and I want to, you know, give credit to, to Amy and Stephanie White and the team for bringing those numbers into alignment, back, back into alignment to where we need it to be. But we're still higher than where we were ten years ago with the department that's funded there. And that goes back, and I'm not getting into the whole conversation, that's finance, that's not my, but that's part of the concerns. So you see the staffing chart, then the special education enrollment, train this with the, the, the PowerPoint that was provided November first. And, you know, it does reflect that, there's a total count that gets updated at the end of the year with that as well. So, and to, to your point, and, and I, again, um, Director Miller, I'll get you that information, I'll send that out to you folks. Because if you've ever seen, it's like, oh, here's our enrollment and you see it sometimes in the fall when I start sending it out. Let's say we have like the several hotspots in different areas, some of my Friday updates every once in a while, I'll send that, say, here's our current staffing, the ratio compared, are we within our target or below our targets and such. The big unknown for us next year will be kindergarten. And we changed the way that we've done our modeling for elementary. We're, we're, we're putting a hundred-and-thirty-one full-time teachers in the K-five classrooms. And we're holding eight floaters. So we're going to see where the kids show up for kindergarten. And then that's where we will assign those eight floaters so that we don't get this disparity, but that will occur late in August. You know, once we really know where the kids are going. So we've made some adjustments there. Elementary, we had to tweak maybe a cou-, a, a few FTEs, but again, part of that's because of the grade level center moving out. Fifth grade was a, a larger grade, pardon my wrong time ahead, than the incoming fifth grade overall.
I think the necessity here is, and you've offered to do so and I appreciate it, the transparency on this, these terms of rightsizing. Because this data you gave us just further kind of, um, points to what I'm asking. I mean, between twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two, we went from seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-nine students to seven-hundred, seven-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirteen. So, um, you know, a sizable loss there and we, uh, went, uh, down about a half in FTE. In teachers. I appreciate that, um, again, there's other parts to these puts and takes. And that's why I'm saying it's, it was, in the past, it was always a little bit easier to understand the pain and what, and make the decisions and cuts when we knew there was specific programming. What I'm hearing is, you know, it's just simply shrinking of the class sizes. It's a little challenging to understand how twenty-two and a half are coming out.
And I can speak to that as well, actually, to, sometimes my brain's a little bit slow at this point in the night. So for the past year and a half, with the different federal money that we've been receiving, our FTEs, our teacher numbers have been inflated. So when we're doing our budget, we're saying, if we're taking all the federal money away, and I have to go back to rightsizing just based upon what we have, all of the folks that were coded to all of the other areas are, are, are in that mix because we're inflated at the moment.
And I, I agree with, I, I agree with Eric. I think that level of detail to understand that this is what we're talking about probably would have been helpful upfront. Because we want to understand, you know, we're reducing positions, people, as we all know. Having, understanding, okay, these are the, these are the COVID reductions, because we've talked about them, they're hard, hard-coded. That didn't happen, you know, I don't want, I, I just, my little, um, you know, again, being careful with your labeling. I, I'm, I'm going to call it, call it out again, having one item shift categories, I've never seen before. And I'm, I'm hopeful that, um, we can next time make sure that that doesn't happen. Because it's a little unsettling for this board member.
Would you mind also, um, illuminating the, uh, the calculation you used for percent change in this one table here? I've always used, um, present minus past divided by past, but I, I did some quick calculations on a couple of these rows and it's not quite the same.
Are you, this document?
It's, uh, the one with that, the date.
That's for you then.
It's the change between twenty-thirteen and twenty-twenty-two, is that the numbers you calculated?
Yeah, oh, I, yeah, twenty-thirteen and twenty-twenty-two.
It's near, it's nearer to it, I'm just not coming to the same zone as I'm with you, so.
I will check the spreadsheet, I, I do this in my head, I can draw the spreadsheet. So sometimes, um, one of the things was, I'm getting really nerdy, I was going all the way back to two thousand nine and I was like, okay, that's just too far. And so when I condensed it to two thousand thirteen, I, I noticed as I was starting to print these up, some of my cells were still going back to the two thousand nine column. So it shifts off a little bit then.
And then Brian, Lisa and I, we had a conversation about some numbers too, that we didn't quite understand, but then we reconciled it. And, yeah, we'll go back.
I would also like it if you could, um, clarify that you have a role here for district ad, district-wide admin. And then in the, the, the stuff we're working with here, we have much wider breakout, human resources, marketing, communications consulting, still, you know, well, maybe, but finance, things I'm going to guess are in that number, but may or may not be. My years of experience, as limited as they are, I've learned that this number, this, this term admin is looked at very differently. Not, I'm not specifically meaning in our district, statewide, everywhere else. So, um, if you would, please tell me how to map those together so I can understand that, it would be helpful.
So the chart that I'm providing are the bargaining units, not the departments.
Okay.
The budget unit, which is on.
Do you have a similar chart by department? Not right now, but could you bring something like that?
The list of staffing shows it that way, right? Because that's the description?
Is it because you're moving people around from different departments and it makes it harder?
Well, partly. So in two thousand eleven, when I came here, I had thirty-two job descriptions for clerical staff, okay? I had about fifteen for EAs, different job descriptions. Since then, I've reduced it, I have three job descriptions for clerical. So I'm, I'm trying, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm, I'm going in my head mapping, it's like, I'm going to have all these different titles, all these, and so I have to go by the name of the individual to try to track this pathway through versus just pulling up a bargaining unit. It could be done, it's just going to take me a little bit of time to get there.
The finance within the school and you have the different jobs within the school, wouldn't mean that be kind of program-like, um, right?
It's the, I think he's asking for the trend data, because it's changing, yeah.
If, if I, if I could get away with just looking at two thousand thirteen and two thousand twenty-two, that would help a lot. And I would then try to just give you the bench, the, the end marks, if you'd be okay with that.
So, I, I just would like a better understanding of who's in some of these groups. I, I, looking at this, you know, um, you know, district-wide admin has actually seen a, um, more, a higher percentage. If you wrote, you know, again, because the numbers are so significantly different, you wrote a percentage, um, has seen a, a, a higher percentage change than the teacher row. But I'm not sure that equates to what I'm looking at for a budget adjustment rows here, so I want to understand.
Last year, didn't we have a chart that gave the descriptions? Remember I was asking for that last week?
You had a description.
Who's in that district-wide admin?
Bargaining unit.
Remember Director Alt? Yeah, is that, yeah, is that part of what Director Noah was asking for? You remember that chart, Director Miller, when we told what was in district-wide admin, we broke it out. But it's for recent years, it doesn't go, yeah, we'd have to generate a different one of that.
Just want to clarify, you're talking this, not the special ed?
Yes.
Thirteen.
Right.
Yeah, because again, the, 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 the numbers that are in special ed are represented on the front sheet as well. So we went from a director and an assistant director in special ed to a director and four supervisors. That's going to bounce into your DWA on the general side as well. That's going to have an impact on that.
Okay.
I, I will, I'll work on that, I'll see if I can get you something.
Before I'm done, just a couple of comments in general. I appreciate the repeated inquiries about open recs. Frankly, that's kind of part of how budget cuts go, is, you know, if you're cutting in an organization and, um, meaning you're cutting personnel, you of course close down any open recs first and then, then you cut to the actual roles. So, um, I'm, personally, I'm just making the assumption that that's what we're looking at when we see these things in front of us. And as unfortunate as they are, um, the, the extended conversations around, uh, specific roles such as special ed or psychologists and such, I actually, um, don't struggle with those as much when I hear our staff experts explain that they have accommodated or adjusted. I do question at times the assumed efficiencies, but, um, I do defer to their expertise on a lot of that. My challenge in, is, I would rather see specific cuts. As painful as that is for all of us to talk about, I would rather see what these actually mean, um, rather than make assumptions that, um, you know, that we can just magically, and I'm not, I know that's overestimating it, but I'm for the point of conversation, magically, uh, make the numbers appear because, because of a number, an FTE number goes up on a sheet.
The, the other, the other number that's embedded in the reductions is our compensatory reduction. So there's eight FTEs, that's just compensatory at the elementary level.
Okay.
At two million dollars, we lost funding, and that is this.
So we lost some funding because of families not filling out the primary due slot.
So here's the chart I was asking about, so that shows you who's in that DWA. It's all the directors and, wait, 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 two days.
Okay, so sorry.
And the coordinator and supervisors.
Okay.
So.
The lady is at the bottom.
That's one piece of what we were asking for, so, okay.
Well, yeah, but I mean, that then doesn't, those are just the director levels. And I would assume every department has a director, so I can understand why there probably hasn't been a lot of cuts there. But there are, uh, other roles inside of these, these business operations, I would call them in general terms, departments that potentially could be worth discussion and every year we are constantly not having that discussion. So.
So the, the other positions.
We went over this last week, or last, last week.
Clerical, I can tell you in business finance, it's a, a director of finances in the unaffiliated, right?
Okay.
There's the executive director of business, a director, then you have four clerks, payroll supervisor.
Compliance.
The compliance. And then a point-five that's shared between assistant soup and for clerical. So it's point-five in the soup, A soup's budget and it's point-five added to the business finance. So that's who in the business. And we have a breakdown of that, I can provide. Actually, it's in our public directory, you see, every department, it's in our directory. You see the different positions and the people.
Okay.
So the business office is just really Lisa, the point-five, and then the rest are all finance to get to that nine-point-five. Right? So we can share the directory, it's out in public, you can see all the positions within each department.
Okay. I'm done.
Lisa, Stacy, are you remembering everything you need to bring back?
It's just a couple of different documents.
Yeah, okay.
Others?
I just want to understand, so when we're, when you, when the information is brought back that you're requesting to see and all the discussion is done, we're going to be voting on scenarios?
We're going to make, well, the goal probably tonight is to kind of say, like, we're going to want to look at this spreadsheet and determine us as a board, what are we comfortable reducing, if we choose to do anything with the unassigned fund balance? And if we are. And if we are in, um,
Agreement.
Not necessarily agreement or like voting approval, but like if, if we're kind of in a consensus of sorts for a particular scenario of the three that were presented.
Okay.
So, or a modification based off of what we want to.
Right.
Move with the numbers.
Okay. I just wanted to know where we were going when we get this information.
I, I do have a couple other, I actually have some questions, but I don't know if anybody else.
We vote on the final budget in June.
In June, yeah.
Oh, so we're just collecting information.
We're giving them direction to. Work out, work more numbers in. And then, yeah.
I just have one, one more question. The obvious one is, you know, the decision to sell Metcalf. There's obviously a position there in terms of either .5 or 1.0 for the maintenance of the property, because somebody had to go in and check on it and, and all of that. So I think, I'm sure you were already there, Stacy.
Leave it as aware. Yeah, we've already discussed that. We weren't gonna put it on the list until we knew what direction was going to occur with the budget.
Is it only just some slight maintenance? Are we not like at least sweeping the floors in someone or something? Custodial work there?
Well, we haven't.
We have open doors, so it's clean, because remember with leasing. The open door twice a week. Oh, it's.
The general maintenance needs occur as well as custodial work, because when other folks are leasing the area for different purposes, we still have equipment in the building. So when a department tech sees a whomever needs to go and get something, they need the building opened up, support to, to pull those resources. So, you know, it, it's the big messy garage that gets rented out. Yes, we need a person there, kind of, you know. I probably shouldn't say it that way, but you know, it has a lot of stuff in it.
Yeah.
And the exterior too. We need to keep it looking well, so that's part of it too.
Well, and with the sale of Metcalf or potential sale of Metcalf, we'd be looking at utility savings as well. My, I have a question regarding, a couple of questions. First with the principals, the two that are being vacant to reductionses. So related to, you know, again, retirements and such, what is the plan for, with those reductions? Where are those gonna be felt? So like we have, we have one retirement from Virtual Academy. We have another.
He was funny, he was.
It's much more fun at the kids' table.
He kept moving backwards.
I know.
He wanted to share.
He was almost in the person.
Share our discussion.
Yeah, so, so ultimately, right now, what we do is we, we still have two positions in our principal unit that would be considered as principals on special assignment. So ultimately, what we would, what we expect to see is we would no longer have that title on any of our principals. And so as you think about what that looks like for some of the shifts, lots of which would need to be determined, we do have one of our administrators who is both assigned to support middle schools as well as Virtual Academy. With the numbers that we're looking at for Virtual Academy that, that Director Silvine mentioned earlier, as well as some of the requests and feedback given by some of our Virtual Academy staff, the likelihood is to pair elementary Virtual Academy with one of our smaller elementary schools. And if you think about from a numbers perspective that we were given, taking the elementary Virtual Academy pairing with an elementary site, there's one of our smaller sites, still that combined is smaller than some of our larger elementary sites. And so from a workflow perspective, that, there's some, some possibilities there. There's also some possible synergies that I know that our Virtual Academy teams are looking for, i.e. staffing, having some consistency with time for specials, teachers, counselors and, and social workers, et cetera, that can create, I think, some of that environment when you tie it together to another elementary site.
And would that happen at the secondary level then too?
That's right. Yep. And we would pair that then also at the secondary. The secondary piece, remember, is a little bit unique in that there already is kind of that pairing. Because very few, if any, of our Virtual Academy secondary teachers are exclusively Virtual Academy, whereas in the elementary, they are. In the secondary, almost all of them have additional assignments in person, meaning they also have that connection to the administration within our secondary. So you're talking about somebody that has to take on some of the oversight, but it is quite likely that the other principals would continue to provide some of the observations, other connections to that staff for staff meetings, et cetera, that happen. So there's pieces and components to be built out to that oversight, but that's likely where you would see that. And again, with the opening at Vista View, we certainly would fill that. And again, that's one of our smaller elementaries. That could be that partnership with the Virtual Academy as well. And then reassigning throughout the system to make sure that we have the building principals filled out in that way.
Are we seeing some of the reductions in enrollment into Virtual Academy is because they're coming back in person into the buildings?
We're not seeing that yet. So, you know, as, as we're kind of moving on the backside of this, we're not seeing this exodus of, I want to leave my Virtual Academy class and go back in person or full-time. My enrollment numbers are staying fairly steady. I bounce up and down three to four students every other week, one direction or the other, but I do that throughout the whole system in different grades and buildings. But I'm not, really what it comes down to is, we just don't always get responses.
Right.
That's really what it comes down to. You know, you send the stuff out, you ask for it, but you don't always get a full, all the information that comes back.
And it does, you know, because we, as a board, worked and agreed that we wanted to move forward with having a Virtual Academy and going through the whole paperwork process. I just want to make sure that we're still investing in wanting to bolster the Virtual Academy option. And so that might actually be an errant question in terms of marketing strategy or tactic to maintain the, the draw of the students into Virtual Academy, whether they're in this district or in another district who are seeking a virtual experience. Because I think, I get concerned if we want to keep, if we keep cutting where we actually wanted to invest, we're, we're, the program won't be successful.
And, and we need to get it to a place where it's efficient.
Yeah, right. Any other questions? Okay, so let's play with the spreadsheet. That'll bring Lisa back with the, the interactive model, yes.
See the fund balance changes?
Yep, yep.
Thank you. Thank you. We got feedback. Thank you, team.
While we're switching, I just wanted to make a, a comment about special ed, just in general, from life experience and my experience at Southwest Metro. What I understand and why we are seeing an increase in terms of staffing for special ed over time is because the needs of the students are more intensified than they were previously. What I have heard from Southwest Metro and even in 2017, that many of the students that were once, that were considered level four maybe five years ago, are actually in level two settings now. And so that's why you're seeing an intensity of need of service, direct support for students, and that's why there's more staffing need in special ed that we're seeing in our district. Because the level four kids are even more, have even more needs than what our district can support. And so that's, just needed to make that comment. So that's interactive model.
What would you like Lisa to do once she closes it up?
Um, well, kind of, well, I think, I think part of it is, is, is there a scenario, hearing from members, that we are interested maybe in targeting? And then we can look at the fund balance. So like right now is one, do nothing. Like, there's nothing cut and we have the $10 million deficit. Or the next scenario where we have the right sizing and preliminary adjustments and half of the S R three, right? Or is it, without S R three, no, it hasn't, half of S R three, which is a 3.2. Or scenario three, which is the, doing 70% of S R three in, this year and leaving only 30% in the next year.
I personally like scenario two. Other reasons you already stated, because we're not, we're extending, we're not using 70%. It's being more conservative, but still using money that we need to use to kind of stay somewhat level. I mean, not making, not increasing that deficit, it's kind of making my. Happening to some money that we can use, but just not overextend ourselves. That's what makes sense to me.
Thank you. Others?
I guess one thing I've been curious about, and I think I brought this up at the last meeting also, is do we want to consider the possibility of adjusting our class size ratios? Given everything we've been talking about for the last four hours.
Are we moving an increase?
Hmm?
Increasing?
De, I'm talking about decreasing our class. Sorry, did I say increase?
No, no, you didn't, you didn't, you didn't say either or.
I absolutely would not say let's increase our class sizes. My question is, I think it was two years ago, or maybe even three years ago, where we adjusted to our current. Maybe it was just, whatever it was.
It was like two years ago, right? Yeah.
We adjusted to our current class sizes, given, you know, at the time, I think COVID was coming, but we maybe didn't know that it was, well, I guess we knew by the, by the point time we actually voted on the budget, but. Yeah, we voted on the budget in June of 2020.
Yeah, that's true, that's true. But I'm trying to remember.
But anyway.
If it was that one or the other one.
What we didn't know at the time was what all the impacts were gonna be and how long it was gonna last and all of that. And given some of the learning loss we've seen, given some of the challenges we've had with keeping our newer teachers, given so many different things, is, is this, and given the projected possible, do we want to use some of our fund balance to invest in lowering our class sizes? I guess is my question, while we hopefully begin the recovery from the pandemic. And that use that as a way to potentially address some of the learning loss issues.
So my question on that would be, if, if you say that, I assume you mean you're speaking of the four or five average numbers that are given out, because that's really what the board to date has had directive on.
Right.
So we have an elementary level 24.5, and I don't remember the rest. They just go up from there.
I think when we did it last time, that was part of, I think that was part of one of the interactive models was, if we change it from X to Y, what does, what does the budget impact?
But that's what you're speaking of, is changing that number.
Yes.
So you, if we talked about it, in your mind, it would be like a half a percent move on it or something in that nature. I'm not.
Yeah, whatever. Yeah, yeah.
So my question is, why? Why are we, why are you suggesting that? What is the, what is the, the need in that question?
The need?
Yeah.
Well, hopefully it would lower our class sizes, which I think many would say makes it more likely for teachers to be able to be successful in teaching the students, which theoretically helps some of our learning loss issues that we've continually heard about, heard about. We also continue to have issues around our testing. And again, if we have lowered class sizes, is that something that can also help address some of our testing and gap issues around our test results?
Well, given that that number is lower than many districts that outscore us in testing already.
Right.
And districts around us. I, I'm playing a little bit of this with you. I apologize. But what I'm trying to get at is, I would rather than talking about that, I would rather talk about a way that we extend that, our jurisdiction on that, a little bit further into the puzzle. So it's not so much that the average number needs necessarily reevaluated, in my opinion. It's how it's applied and what we allow to be the, 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 the confidence levels on either side of that variable, or that, that, that average number, right? So how, how much we allow classes to get outside of that spectrum before the mandatory requirement changes and such. I think that's probably what ends up being more reflective than what you're suggesting. I don't know that we need to reassess whether 24.5 is the right number. I think we need to be saying, we need to make sure a certain amount of our classes are absolutely within that 24.5 or close to it or a certain distance from it.
Which may ultimately have the same impact though, because if we say we're gonna cap a class, and say you can't, classes cannot go over X amount, that ultimately is gonna need.
I'm not, I'm not saying what I'm saying is right. I'm just saying, I think that would have a better impact towards the goal you're stating than, than necessarily going back and saying, we want 24.5 to be 24.3 or two or something like that.
Well, that's really only impactful at the secondary level, right?
We would, we would make this adjustment.
High school level.
We would have that conversation for all the levels, yes.
Blocked, kind of.
I don't know that that's necessarily the solution, because in having a conversation with my daughter's elementary school teacher, the issue is you have kids, some students that have fallen behind, where some have kept up. And it's a needs assessment based on what students in the class need additional help, because that teacher is spending more time with the students that have fallen behind than, you know, the students that are up to speed. And I don't know that adjusting class size necessarily makes a difference in that scenario.
I agree. I don't think adjusting class size may be the answer, but your peer professionals and people like that, that help, that, that's what they're there for. So when the teachers can just teach the kids that can, you know, keep going at the same level, the peer professionals are there to give the extra help to the ones that need extra help, to need, to, to catch up. And then there's also, you know, I'm not trying to put any more, or put more responsibility, but there's also, people have to teach their kids stuff at home too. I mean, really, to keep up in school, you have to. Maybe, I mean, I'm not trying to run the household, but I'm just saying, if your kid is behind, it, it, you really require that. And I just know that from working in school all these years.
You can't make parents do that though.
No, I'm not trying to make anybody do it. I'm just giving you the observation of just from being in the, in the, in the education field, that that's what helps to keep them.
Yes.
Keep them caught up. That's all I'm saying. I'm just giving you an observation. I'm not trying to make anybody do anything.
No.
Because that's ridiculous. I can't do that. But I'm just saying, that's, that's, I'm just telling you, that's the problem. To help them keep up.
But I, you know, when I hear what I hear from my, and this is the voice of a teacher in our district, and what she's telling me, and the struggle, you know, from the pandemic and kid, and have, and having kids in her class that get no help at home. None.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, and that's the reality. That is the reality.
That's right.
Yeah.
The, and the problem is systemic, because it is not necessarily the parent's fault, because if they're working two or three jobs, or if there's other things going on where there's not, where they're worried whether they're gonna have a, a, a bed to sleep in, food, any of those things. Those are factors that interfere with a parent's ability to parent or to teach their children.
All those factors. And a lot of times, language barriers too. They don't understand the stuff their kids are learning. So all of those things are factors. I'm just saying that, you know, I was just giving you a big scenario of what is making the gap bigger and what, what, what support these kids need besides school. They also need home support. I'm not saying it's always gonna be, I mean, you know, logical to do that, because it isn't. All the, all these kids' lifestyles are different. But I'm just saying that, I was just making them.
Yeah, no, I think, I think we're, we're in consensus of understanding.
Anyway, that's beside the point of the budget, so.
No, but, but it does raise a question now, if, if this is what we're hearing, do, you know, are some of the projected idea of cuts of EAs that would be supportive in the classroom that could actually help the teacher, help the students, is that being considered? But that doesn't sound like here in terms of the scenario we're looking at. Anybody else considering or thinking about scenario two or scenario three? Recommendations, or do we want to say, you know, because my biggest concern is, how far do we want to kick the can before we have to make really significant cuts or actually evaluate whether or not we have to close schools again in the future, which I really hope I'm not on the board to do that? Uh, so, because like if we're trying to project. So, because like if we're trying to project some sort of savings or balances now, what, you know, I look at the future impacts in years two, three, and four down the road, knowing that those are going to be things that we'll have to address again. And we do actually have a healthy unassigned fund balance, and so that's usually where we, as a board, make a decision that might help play with some of these numbers too.
I'm not a fan of using fund balance right now.
At all? Oh, I'm sorry.
Right now, right now.
Yeah.
Using, using fund balance right now.
Okay.
I have concerns about that because of so many unknowns.
Especially just coming out of a pandemic.
Right. I have to believe that, um, you know, we are maintaining most of the investment in our communications department with strategic enrollment, and I have to believe that that's going to play itself out. They're doing wonderful stuff. So in terms of, you know, whether, whether it's scenario two or scenario three, as long as we're not using fund balance.
What does, what does, if, if, if we went with scenario three, realizing that it would actually be less of S R three funds in F Y twenty-four, what does F Y twenty-four look like?
So we're looking at the.
Okay, hang on, there's, there's a problem. It has to be seven, six, one. So if you do that, then for F Y twenty-four, we would then need to change, um, this number here. Sorry, to forty-one. Because you now only have the total of five million four eighty-one to use in federal funds for aid. And since you're using three point two, this also needs to be a lesser amount. So this is assuming that you would be utilizing of the, you'd still be using three point two for current costs in the following year, which is essentially all that you have left of your, um, it's most of your funds that you have left for your eighty percent three, S R three funds, okay? The remaining thirty percent. And then the two point two eight one is for new costs. And you see where that's the same as on the expenditure side. So right now, you have a list that is about three point two mil. So some things will have to come off that list. And in addition, a lot of things actually will have to come off that list, because one point six million of this is for the after-school and outside the school year. So, um, if one point six is that, you only have about six hundred thousand that you can compare to the three point two that you're using this year. Following me? The current twenty-three year is utilizing three point two million for purposes of additional expenditures above and beyond. You will not have that available for the next year unless you lower this three point two here and don't use anything for current retention of staff and programming. Does that make sense? So you're, you're looking at about a, a six hundred to seven hundred thousand dollar leeway there for additional costs until you have to then change the three point two.
Well, and we also know that there are positions that are open.
Right.
And we have that salary that's going to come out in the audit.
Yep, that's true. So we're thinking two? Option two?
I think scenario two, I'd rather be a little more
Conservative.
Conservative with the funds with the fifty fifty. Because as I think we've all learned over the last two years, we cannot predict the future. Nine months from now, we'd be glad that we've saved half of our money for next school year.
So what, what, what would that look like in fiscal year twenty-four?
Okay.
She broke it, so.
I broke it.
Never seen that line thing before.
No.
Circular reference.
Yeah, it's a circular reference.
Usually when I do those, I don't see the line. Usually when I do circular references, it's an error message, so. Must be something in my settings.
Let me try this differently. We just do it this way.
Usually when I get that, I immediately hit the escape key and go.
That's right. Undo, undo.
Because we did approve a deficit before, so.
I believe that's now looking right. I'm off a little bit, so I'm trying to figure out how come that would be. Must have a bad number down here. There it is. Two. Okay. So this is now matching scenario two, and so for F Y twenty-four, in this case, you're going to start with this fund balance, and under this scenario, you're wanting to go then to the fifty percent, because you now have that available, so I'm going to change this back to the, um, right here, to the A M thirty-eight. And that then changes this number as well. So that would be what you would be looking at having available, because you now have, instead of the five million, you have, um, you know, back up to the eight million available, of which, um, approximately six million four fifty-six, six thirty-one is going to be your S R three eighty percent. And the other amount is one million six fourteen, one fifty-three, which is the after the school year, after the school day. So, um, this is still utilizing three point two. You can modify that if you chose. That would be used for purposes of current and existing costs. And it would allow then that difference of about, um, that three point two match again. So you got about three point two, three point two. I'm rounding these numbers, okay? That you're using for current and you're using for new costs, very similar to the current year, projected amount under that scenario two. And you still have all of your half of the, um, after-school, after the school year dollars available under the S R three twenty percent.
And the deficit increases is because the ending fund balance, or the, the ending fund balance was higher under scenario three.
It is increasing because.
The beginning fund balance into fiscal year would be higher, right?
Um, the, sorry, are you talking beginning fund balance of twenty-three, twenty-four?
Uh, scenario three. So like scenario three.
Yep.
Um, in scenario three, we were going to look at for F Y twenty-four, a deficit of only three million. But now in scenario two, because the ending fund balance is twenty-six versus twenty-nine, we're looking at a deficit of six point five million.
Right, because you, in, um, scenario two, you will have some use of fund balance.
Yeah.
The two point, almost six mil, right? And under scenario three, there was no use of fund balance.
Got it.
Yep. Instead, you use federal funds.
Okay.
And again, we know that the audit is most likely going to be more in our favor as far as that next year goes.
So under scenario two, we're not looking necessarily to formally balance the budget by reducing our ending fund balance percent, the percentage unassigned. Thinking it'll be made up.
We have to assume it'll be that until we get the audit.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're going to, so under scenario two, we're, if, if we not make any other changes or ask for any additional cuts, or do we want to ask for any additional cuts, um, to balance the budget? Um, those are a couple of questions. Then we would be essentially potentially approving a deficit budget, right? Not a fully balanced budget. Yeah.
Well, and I think, um, to your point, Leslie, we don't want to kick the can.
No.
So, yeah, we'd have to come up with more cuts.
To balance the budget if we choose to, and would that be a suggestion then? So first of all, we kind of want to get a consensus of if scenario two is the way we want to give advice, guidance. And then if it's scenario two, do we want to instruct to consider additional cuts to balance the budget or proceed as is?
I'm fine with scenario two, and I don't think I'm ready for additional cuts this time.
No additional cuts, scenario two, is one recommendation.
I, I am also, um, okay with scenario two, with no additional cuts.
So if we don't make additional cuts now, they're going to be more expensive next year.
I'd be fine with additional cuts, but I just don't see where.
That's, that's for Dr. Battle and her team to find.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it, each year that we don't make the cuts, each position gets more expensive.
And we have to make more cuts in the future.
And we have to make more cuts, right, exactly.
But we still have more money too, when we still haven't used all our money, so still some of that will come into play.
So, so taking into account possible things that come out of the audit, we could see that our fund balance might go up because we didn't spend what we thought.
Correct.
So if we come into a revised budget, we may actually see we're maybe less of a deficit or.
Right, right. I mean, I wouldn't say necessarily. I know, Lisa, you're doing, you know, the last couple of budgets, you've really been pretty, well, COVID kind of threw things out of whack a little bit, right? In, in, in our favor. But if we don't, if we don't, maybe it's an in-between ground, where we ask for additional cuts, but it's not a hundred percent balanced because we know that most likely the audit will be in our favor.
Hmm, okay. Yep, spread the, spread the federal dollars.
Right.
So it's got, what are, because I've heard from everybody else about scenario two.
Definitely scenario two for me.
So we have a consensus for scenario, scenario two.
Yeah. I hear what you're saying. But who knows what the future holds, honestly.
Yeah, right.
But we're back here every single year.
I know.
I mean, we know until the legislature.
And if we cut.
And feds cough up the money, we will continue to be here, and I'm sorry. I mean, we all are frustrated by this. But, I mean, we have to do our due diligence.
But if we cut, or is it going to become kind of the death spiral where we cut and then more people leave because we cut the thing that they liked, or we cut their favorite teacher, or we cut something else, and then the declining enrollment continues and then it just builds on itself?
And then there's a slow one?
There's that risk also.
No, there is, but right now, we're not having the conversation that we had two, three years ago. We're not talking cutting programs.
That's true.
Because people are, are expense. And, yeah, I mean, it's a juggling act.
And I'm still hoping, I'm still hopeful that we will get those funds, because there's just a lot of legislation and a lot of people that are hammering our government, our legislation to fund schools, fund schools, fund schools. So, I mean, something's.
We just need more voices doing that.
They're going to listen and, and, you know, and maybe they may not get as much as we want, but something's better than nothing. I mean, I guess it will help, I hope.
On, in this scenario, we're looking at needing to cut sixteen million in F Y twenty-five.
Right.
I've used a five percent increase as my blush model here, right? For twenty-four, and I've used a four percent increase in twenty-five for expenditures.
And that's based on what we're kind of seeing right now?
Yeah, still work on some contracts, so that, that's coming into play.
And even right now, is being influenced by what's happening in Florida. Didn't tell you to cut inflation, so. I just want to clarify right now, is another unexpected event. We don't know what's going to happen.
Right. So looking at the remaining fund balance in scenarios two and three, thirteen point oh two percent or fourteen, it's almost a two percent difference. What does it look like if we split the difference between those two and go with fourteen percent fund balance? So we make some additional cuts, but maybe not as many as it would if we did scenario three?
So, because we would end up needing to reduce the fund balance versus.
Well, looking at scenario two, we're taking the fund balance from fourteen eleven down to thirteen oh two.
Yep. So if, oh, okay, did that work?
Right, I'm reading that right, correct? I know it's late, but.
Let me try that again.
Want to keep it where it is even, what does that look like?
Here, let's do this.
Oh, like keep it at.
Keep it at fourteen eleven.
Yep.
Then it's not going up or down.
So I'm adding in an extra one point two million dollars in cuts, and that gets you to fourteen oh three. You wanted it at fourteen eleven, you said?
Well, that's what the current projected fund balance is at the end of the budget, so if we wanted to keep it the same.
Finally understand what you're saying.
It's late, all right?
Oh, my God.
I'm crying.
It's half, it's about one point three mil more.
It's what?
It's about one point three million dollars more in reductions. I do have the information below as well with regard to class sizes, but I don't know that that's what you're referring to.
Well, if we're potentially looking at another one point three million in class sizes, I don't think my earlier suggestion to look at lowering class sizes is very likely.
Um, I had been asked.
Okay, we'll just decide that Dr. Battle's team will try to find some more cuts somewhere and then go with scenario two to also.
Well, we can, I'd just say use scenario two, and as you're doing more evaluation in terms of things that we're running now with a potential sale of Metcalf, you know, how that might impact utilities in terms of decreasing the budget at all. Any of those savings factors related there? And, um, any other things, um, that might be considered, um, but I. any other things, um, that might be considered, um, but I think that we're all fairly in agreeance. It's hard to continue to make cuts, and at the same time, we don't want to keep pushing a, a larger deficit to have to deal with two, two years from now, so.
Are there still other school funds that are, you know, when the sale of the school?
Oh, yeah, there's, we'll, we'll cross that bridge.
What's the amount of the additional cuts?
Um.
About her scenario two, what would it be?
One point three. Without the additional cuts, you mean?
Yeah.
Help me.
I, I don't think.
So you did a calculation, one point one, that's what I'm asking.
You said one point three million.
Yeah.
For the additional cuts, if we.
We'll get you back to the fourteen point one.
Yeah.
Pointing out that, that's not what.
What we're necessarily recommending.
Basically saying, go with section, go with two and check between the cushions on the couch for any last.
Yeah, yeah.
See how close we can get to fourteen eleven.
Or, or any birthday cards that have money in it, you know?
We get close to fourteen eleven.
What, what about, uh?
Or, or a balanced budget.
Well, I mean, to see how close we can get, I think, but.
The, what about contracted services? Did we do any reviews of? I thought that was a conversation that was going to happen, contracted.
Contracted services?
Contracted services, reviewing contracts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we have one on development now, our transportation.
Copiers are up for renewal as well, and we have, um, this doesn't cost us much, but the, um, video, or the vending machines are up too. Those are the three main contracts I'm aware of for, for the end of this year.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the majority will probably not have come reflection on this conversation, if they don't necessarily come out of the general fund.
Our transportation.
Transportation.
They all do.
Other, other major expenses, uh, don't necessarily come out of the general fund, right?
Um, yeah, which ones are you meaning?
Insurance is of different sorts.
Oh, so if you're talking about, um, health insurance assumptions, that potentially could change this, yes, because our premiums for the portion that the district pays is showing up in your general fund. So if you change the percentage assumption for that based from, compared to what I had in my original model, that will shift things.
I think it would make sense to look into that.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's a couch cushion search for sure.
Again, is that something you can do in terms of like current contracts?
Oh, yeah.
Lisa.
Yes.
Looking in the couch cushion, talk to the board about the O P E B.
Yep. So, um, every year we do, every other year, you do an actuarial study. It's required. We have a revocable trust, which means that it is not in a trust where you cannot move the money. You can move the money. Um, we were noticing that, um, there is an, another example of a district in which they chose to utilize their dollars that were above and beyond the actuarial liability for their other post-employment benefits, and instead transferring more into the general fund than might otherwise have been, so.
And so we didn't bring it forward because we have, we don't have an updated actuary.
It's in the process, yeah.
It's in the process.
But that's a tool that some districts do use as they move forward if they are close to having a pretty closed group, which we know have a closed group, but then it's a question of how much is, is your, what's the risk to your insurance premiums in the future going up, and then you may not have enough funds to cover that, because if you run out of funds that you have, we sold bonds back in oh nine, and we have them invested, and because they're in the Fund Twenty-Five O P E B account, thirty percent of them are invested in, um, higher interest investments as well. And so the point is, if you run out of funds to pay for the premiums that are necessary under that language, then the general fund would need to pick up that. At this point in time, we have had actuarial calculations that do show our investments are greater than the liability, and it's when you have that scenario that then you have that as a potential option, but you, you can't go like crazy with it. You can, it has to be reasonable.
So that's why I bring it up this forward, with them very well with your decisions about that. But look at where we are right now and the investment. We don't know what, I, I know. So, okay, so we may bring a little bit more in there, but we don't have the actuary.
I wanted to pay for Stacy, is Stacy. Uh, in years past, we've had a, the conversation around, um, knowing that there was a, a certain group of potential retirement.
Oh.
And then we make an updated on that to throw some money, I don't know, to throw some money, and to save money. Is that a potential situation?
Um, I'm running out of teachers to make that viable. That's why I'm asking, because typically we, we look for a number around twenty-five, and we are down to twelve or less that are creating nine teachers.
I think the other thing that we as individuals, as community members, that we need to keep pushing out to our community, to, and to the parents of our students in our district, fill out the form for free and reduced lunch regardless of whether or not you think you're applicable to it or not, that is impacting our budget, um, and use our legislative, uh, um, platform and contact our legislators to keep pushing the fact that they need to be funding education.
And making sure staff understands the significance.
Yes.
Right, Dr. Battle, as you had pointed out earlier, staff didn't, they kind of understood it, but not truly, and now I have a better sense.
Well spent.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
So we can help with our principles, give it that message.
Yeah. Dr. Battle, I did, do the work of the percentages. Do you want that shared out?
Oh, there was a request for the percentages, so of the current list, what was the percentage of their total budget we were recommending for it? So we do have that. Pass that out for you too.
Great.
You could just show that on the screen so they know what you're referring to. And that will change. So there they are.
Can you see it well enough, or do you want it bigger?
The right sizing was up above.
Oh, yes, do you want me to go up?
It's already at the top, yeah, we have it for all.
Okay, there we go.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I, do you feel you have the direction you need from the board for this next version?
Want to recap, Lisa, so that we're clear. I have it written on my notes here.
Um, work with the assumptions made under scenario two. The goal is to have no change in fund balance if possible with a fourteen point one one percent unassigned. I would just caution the fact that the unassigned's tricky to guess at if the savings that we end up with where there are additional dollars into the fund balance, if they are in the area of A L C, since many of these funds are for the same type of purpose, or if they are in capital, those are, those are two areas of restricted funds that may increase the restricted fund balance, but not necessarily increase your unassigned. So just keep that in mind. Um, but I understood that it's to basically try and get this, so it's a balanced budget and, um, shoot for the fourteen point one one.
Yep, and check all the cushions and birthday cards.
Check all the cushions.
Yep. Great, thank you, everyone. I think we're adjourned to this workshop. We'll be back in a couple of weeks. Oh, I, what do I have to do this?
Yeah, that too.
Oh, and I got ten, although ten's.